And we are now called to order, and at this time I'd like to call for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and Texas flags. Would you all please rise? Would you like to lead us in the invocation as well?
Sure, absolutely. If you'll bow your heads in prayer. Dear Lord, we are so grateful to be here today, to be able to do your work and to be able to do the work of all the citizens of Nuasis County. Lord, we ask you to watch over us today and all of the elected, appointed officials, all the people who volunteer their time to serve you, to serve this county, this great county of Nuasis. Lord, we ask that you will remind us that we are here to be servants for the people of Nuasis County and that you will watch over us and give us strength to do the right thing. In your son's name, we ask these things and pray. Amen.
Commissioner, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you all, and good morning. It's 9:09 a.m. for the record. We are at the Nuasis County Courthouse, 901 Leopard, and I do certify that there is a quorum here present. For the future, we're going to start safety briefings, and I know that we have both our sheriff here and other members of the deputy staff, and I just want you to know in case of an emergency that we would follow the appropriate lead of our safety and law enforcement officials. And in the future, we're going to ask those that are CPR certified to identify themselves at the beginning of the meeting. So is there anyone that's CPR certified? Great. Thank you.
Can you come sit by me, please?
At this time, we're going to move to general information reports and receive a presentation on the new agenda category. I'm sorry. Yes, on the new agenda category, general information reports. Tyner?
Yes, as you may recall, about in the middle of Judge Neal's tenure, we had an item for general information reports. That way, the commissioners, if they had something coming up that they wanted to announce to the public and tell the public about it, we ran into a little bit of trouble. Something happened that the caller time said, hey, if I knew that that was going on, I would have been there. And so at the advice of the county attorney at the time, we removed that general information report. I was having a conversation with the judge and Commissioner Vaughn, and they wanted it back on the agenda, but know that it's a category and you can submit items under it. So please give enough notice. And so it is now, we programmed the agenda link system. When you submit an item, you can hit the drop-down box and click on general information reports and put your item in. We'll see it. If there's an agenda that does not have any submissions by any of you, you can call me and I can submit an item for you under this category. Hey, I want to tell the public that there's a rabies vaccination clinic going on at animal control next week. Well, I can put it on there. We give enough notice so the public knows what the item is, and that way we can announce it to the public. And I'm, me personally, I'm, I don't think that this item should be subject to the Tuesday 5:00 p.m. deadline. If we can get it on there and you want to announce something to the public, I will try to accommodate each of you at any time before posting. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyner. We think this is going to be a good way to share what's happening in your precinct and just collectively be more effective communicators. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes for the meetings held on March 13th and March 27th separately, please.
I'm moved.
Second.
And for both commissioners?
Yes.
Thank you. Having heard a motion, a second, all those in favor of approving the minutes, or if there's any discussion, please, of course, let me know. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. I was an aye on that as well. And now we are going to adopt the following resolutions, proclamations, and orders. Number one is honoring Porter Anzus High School Boys Basketball Team for their successful 2018-2019 season.
And I'll proceed to read this item. Whereas the Porter Anzus High School Boys Basketball Team completed the 2018-2019 season with a 12-0 district record and a 35-7 overall record, whereas the Porter Anzus High School Boys Basketball Team won their eighth consecutive district championship, placing their current district winning streak at 90 games. Whereas the Texas Association of Basketball Coaches recognized three of the team's players for all-region honors and one for all-state honors. Whereas the Texas High School Coaches Association recognized two of the team's players for academic all-state honors, and all nine of the Porter Anzus High School Boys Basketball Team's regular-season varsity players were named 30 AA academic all-district players. Whereas the Porter Anzus High School Boys Basketball Team won this season's Marlin Classic and the Flotonia Tournament. Whereas the Porter Anzus High School Boys Basketball Team competed in the Region 4-2A Tournament for the third consecutive year, winning against Wymer in the quarterfinals and against Thorndale for the first time ever in semifinals before advancing to the regional final. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Commissioners Court of Nuasis County that the court hereby recognizes Porter Anzus High School Boys Basketball Team for their significant accomplishments on and in a successful 2018-2019 season.
So moved.
Second.
Judge, just discussion real quick, just so you know, we did try to invite the Porter Anzus Boys to come, but they were not able to coordinate that, so I will be going out and I'll try to coordinate that with you, if you'd like to join, to present something to them in Porter Anzus at their school. For the public's knowledge and as a hint, Porter Anzus and Miller were the two boys' basketball teams that went the furthest in the area. Of course, I'm very proud of the Ray Texans as well as they did as well, and the London Pirates, but Miller and Porter Anzus went one game from being included in the state tournament, so they did very well. Just wanted to, so I would move passage.
Thank you, and I'd love to join you on that eventful day, and of course, we both love basketball in our families, so it's particularly fitting that we go out there, so.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Post same sign. Thank you. Congratulations to Porter Anzus.
The next item, Judge, is National Library Week, and I think we have some library representatives that may want to come up.
Right. I see them. Good morning, Ms. Ida.
Whereas today's libraries are not just about books, but what they do for and with people. In addition, libraries of all types are at the heart of cities, towns, schools, campuses. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all backgrounds can be together and connect. Further, libraries and librarians build strong communities through transformative services, programs, and expertise. Whereas libraries, which promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all, are cornerstones of democracy, and libraries promote civic engagement by keeping people informed and aware of community events and issues. Whereas librarians and library workers partner with other civic organizations to make sure their community needs are being met, and libraries and librarians empower their communities to make informal decisions by providing free access to information. Whereas libraries are a resource for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status by offering services and educational resources that transform lives and strengthen communities. Further, libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Nuasis County hereby declares April 7th through 13th, 2019, National Library Week in Nuasis County, and further encourage all residents to visit the Nuasis County Public Libraries this week and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarian. Because of you, libraries transform.
Thank you, Tyner. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, we're very happy to be here. I'd like to introduce our two librarians, Jeannie Gorza and Crystal Drillan, and they have been very instrumental in being, providing all our programming at both libraries, the Keith Library in Robstown and at the Bishop Branch, and we have had activities this whole week at both libraries, and I think Crystal had something to do.
So at both libraries, we have our Golden Ticket Scavenger Hunt, so kids and adults can go into the library and find a golden ticket and win prizes, thanks to our partnership with Richard Portrait Fairgrounds and the adoption agency, Arms Wide. And we also have a Storytime, so we also have a book cafe, Speed Date with a Book, tomorrow. So I invite each and every one of y'all to the library to explore what we have hidden in our Bishop and our Keith family library.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to pass this wonderful resolution?
Second.
Motion, second, and just adding to the discussion, I just want to also commend you not only for the great work we do at both our county libraries, but the fact of the matter is, they're just community centers. And I get such pleasure every time I go in there to see people looking at books and not, you know, games, and, and the toddler center is just terrific. And I left my purse in my room, but I was going to brag and show you that I have my Nuasis County library card, and if you don't have one, you need to see Ms. Ida and you need to get one today, because not only can you get a book, but you have access to how many online free classes, and let me, let me emphasize free. Do you think there's at least 30 online free classes? How many, the online classes, 30, 40, Crystal?
More than a hundred.
Well, there you go, more than a hundred. And, but they're, they range from, you know, SAT prep for your kids and your grandkids, free. You don't have to go pay for them. They're online free. If you need to have help taking your driver's unnoticed, and what I'd like to do is, they're going to come forward, everyone, and take a picture. What I'd like to do is have a day where we, if you all could please set up getting your library card downstairs. We're doing it today after all. Great, they do listen to me.
Will you be here all day?
Stop and get your library card, because you can help somebody in your family with a free online class this week and celebrate books with all of us. Thank you. Let me just move this behind.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Thank you, girls. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Good work. Good work. Thank you. The next one, Judge, it's actually
Need to vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Post same sign, and the resolution for National Library Week passes. Thank you.
The, the next one, Judge, we caught actually after the event, but Commissioner Maas asked us to put it on the agenda to recognize National Equal Pay Day. Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act of 1963, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. College-educated women employed full-time earn a half million dollars less than their male peers do over the course of a lifetime. Whereas according to the United States Census Bureau, women working full-time year-round in 2018 in the state of Texas typically earn less than 79% of what men earned, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. Nearly four in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their households and nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, making pay equality critical to families' economic security. Whereas a lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement, less income counted in a social security or pension benefit formula. Tuesday, April 2nd, symbolizes the time in 2019 when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men in 2018. Whereas the YWCA Corpus Christi, American Association of University Women, Executive Women International, and the League of Women Voters unite in the belief that fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Nuasis County hereby recognizes April 2nd, 2019, National Equal Pay Day in Corpus Christi, Texas, and urges the citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills, significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourages businesses to conduct internal pay evaluations to ensure women are being paid fairly.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on this resolution?
Motion.
And a second? Discussion? Well, it goes without saying, I don't think that I've had a equal payday, that we have not had an amazing opportunity to gather as women and to address this important issue. And it gives me no pleasure to say this, that it's the women of the United States Senate that are preventing a national equity law to be passed. So we need to make our voices heard, and there is very good arguments on both sides, but there is none greater than the 78, actually, the 79, we've been using 78 cents, so 79 cents is, is an interesting uptick there, but this is an intolerable situation, and 100 years after the right to vote, we still find ourselves hoping, praying, and marching for equality. And so I'm very glad, and I want to thank you, Commissioner Maas, for bringing this to our attention, that we had missed this important occasion, and anything that this county can do to echo and to celebrate women's skills, women's labor, and the contributions they make, but more than anything, all we want is equality. So, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Post same sign.
Next, Judge, we have Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and I see John Lennon, if he would like to come forward, spokesperson for both adult and child protective, oh, and there's others?
We've got some others.
Thank you for being here. April 2019 Child Abuse Prevention Month in Nuasis County. Whereas the tragedy of child abuse may afflict, afflict American children in different ways. Abuse may occur physically, sexually, emotionally. Child neglect, another form of child maltreatment, may occur physically and emotionally, and understanding the forms of child abuse is critical to preventing and responding to maltreatment. Whereas a well-informed and strong family is the surest defense against child abuse. To help educate and strengthen families, community members can offer their time and counsel to parents and children who may need assistance. For example, parent support groups provide an organized forum for assistance. More informally, community members may simply offer a helping hand to families under stress. Whereas civic organizations and government also have an important role to play. Civic groups offer essential support through education, assistance to those at risk, and treatment for victims. Government at the local, state, and federal level must provide funding services and conduct public education projects and enforce child abuse laws. Whereas, as we recognize that we all suffer when our children are abused, that we all benefit from mutual concern and care, and that we all have a responsibility to help more American children grow up healthy, happy, and with unlimited potential for success. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Commissioners Court of Nuasis County that April 2019 is hereby proclaimed Child Abuse Prevention Month in Nuasis County. And further, the court urges all citizens of Nuasis County to join the court in helping to prevent and respond to child abuse by strengthening families and contributing to all children's physical, emotional, and developmental needs.
So moved. Second.
Having heard a motion and a second, we'll open the floor for discussion. Please join us, and we want to thank you for, for being here and creating more awareness for this important issue.
Thank you for having us, and we have a pin to pass out for Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. My name is Ingrid Spear. I am on the Nuasis County Child, Child Abuse Prevention, oh, sorry, Nuasis County Child Welfare Board, thank you. And I started there in 2017. Thank you to the Commissioners Court. As you know, that is, this is the month for child abuse awareness and prevention, and I'd like to share with you some statistics from the state of Texas and from Nuasis County. Last year in the state of Texas, we had 211 fatalities and six in Nuasis County. These are things like children being left in hot cars and other, you know, maybe a swimming pool drowning accident. We have in Nuasis County 96 children that are awaiting adoption. We've had 351 children that were removed from their home. There have been 4,989 cases assigned. That means that there was abuse or neglect that reached the point of, of getting into the system. And then we have confirmed 1,271 victims confirmed for last year. So it's just an important and really critical area that the CPS workers work tirelessly and effortlessly, and, and John Lennon has been just a tremendous asset to our board. We are all volunteer. He provides us with statistics. We do what our best to help. We have a reinvigorated board, I'd like to let you know that, and that we will be more responsive and informed, in part also thank you to John Lennon. We seek a stronger relationship with other agencies and have done a lot to coordinate and try to bring all the child neglect or servicing agencies together, and so that is our focus moving forward. And we'd like to thank you for your support and have a blessed day.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and, and I'd also like to tie this back and work with you. Nuasis County has a very strong interest in behavioral health, and once we can get these children out of an abusive situation, that's just the beginning of the healing, and we need to get them into the proper services, and I'm very concerned, our lack of adolescent behavioral health care or the nonexistence of it is, is a gap, and I'd like to work closely with you all in finding a way to help the children, that you are, you are the first step, right? You're the first step in removing them from a, an abusive situation, but they're going to need years of therapy and counseling to be, to be well, and we need to make sure we get that to them.
And there's a lot of kids who never get adopted, and I thought about this the other day. What happens at Thanksgiving and Christmas? Where do they go? Where do they go? So we have a lot of kids that never get adopted, we have, but anyway, it's a tremendous, a tremendous job, and we have a lot of work to do, but we appreciate any and all support that we can get from you.
Continue to update us and let us know how we can be more supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, they had a great event on April 1st with a lot of organizations that were there at La Palmera Mall, and thanks to John Lennon and others who helped organize them, the media attention was really great and focused on all the different agencies that are working towards this awareness and prevention within our county especially, and so we need to, of course, continue to do our part, and, you know, one of those things is, I think, to make sure that our board has competent, good appointees on there, they're not just filling seats but ready to work, and I believe we have that, and also to start partnership with CPS, you know, that's important to me, having spent 15 times talking the present tense like I'm still there, even though it's been almost two and a half years since I've left to come to do this. And of course, Judge, Judge Chesney, when he was judge, he always wanted to get me before him, and I never was able to go in front of him as a caseworker.
I tried, I tried to get him in there.
But, you know, this, this is sobering work. This is difficult work for the workers also, and so I want to bring that attention too. There are things going on in Austin always, and one of the things is obviously pay to help offset some of these struggles that workers go through, but also reduction of force that we're seeing trying to put skilled workers into a private setting, which has been proven already not to work. So I don't want to taint this proclamation at all about child abuse prevention, but it must go hand in hand with the actions that are being taken by our legislature right now to privatize, which does not work in any state, never has, but because it's pushing a political agenda, that's why it's being done. So we need to be mindful of that as well, because that will continue to lead and increase the amount of abuse neglect that happens in Texas. So let us keep that in mind as we pass this proclamation. Thank you.
And thank you. I want to add to that, Judge, that this is a very important and not a, just a symbolic resolution, it's, but it's, it's very significant, and the work that y'all are doing, we appreciate it. Ms. Spear, thank you very much for, for, as you say, the reinvigoration of the board, and, and I appreciate all of you being here today and have, have worked with your counterpart there. She appeared before me several times in, in court, probably more times than she wanted to, and, and of course, Mr. Lennon and I go way back as well, so we really do, we really don't want to just blow through this. This is an extremely important, extremely important board that you serve on, and we really do appreciate all the efforts that go on, because it's, it's epidemic, and I've had many conversations with Judge McCoy, and, and it's gotten worse since I've left, and, and meaning there's been more removals than even when I was there, and, and believe me, I, I felt like there was gazillions of them where I were there, and, and he says they've, they've more than doubled since I've left, and, and that's, that's, that's heartbreaking to say the least. So thank you very much for your efforts, and we've got to keep pushing hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Having heard a motion, and we've, we've received a motion in a second, I believe, and having heard good discussion, I'll ask for the vote now. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Post same sign.
And Judge, it's also National Crime Victims Rights Week, and I do see some victim services people from the DA that may want to come up? No? Yes? And I'll go ahead and proceed, Judge.
Thank you.
Whereas every year, hundreds of Nuasis County residents are affected by crime, and many will need ongoing care and resources. April 7th through 13th, 2019, is National Crime Victims Rights Week. It is a time to celebrate progress achieved, raise awareness of victims' rights and services, and stand with our families, neighbors, friends, and colleagues whose lives have been forever altered by crime. Whereas we resolve to reach out, listen, and support them as they press forward on the path to recovery. We commit to making our services more accessible and to building partnerships across the community so that we can truly honor the past efforts of the crime victims movement and look forward to a future of hope and resilience. National Crime Victims Rights Week shows victims they are not alone, whereas the theme this year is honoring our past, creating hope for the future. The District Attorney's Office and a myriad of other agencies and organizations throughout Nuasis County are here to help victims by providing valuable resources and, and information to victims and their families. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Nuasis County hereby recognizes National Crime Victims Right Week dated April 7th through 13th, 2019, in Nuasis County, Texas.
So moved.
And a second, please. Having heard a motion, a second, we'll have discussion now. Hello, good morning, Sheriff.
Morning. Good morning, everyone. So yes, it is National Crime Victims Rights Week. It is super exciting, as you all were in, a few of you guys did participate this Monday in the wreath kickoff. Yesterday, we had an awesome proclamation by the mayor's office. Today, we have a health fair at Delmar College, as well as Ask the Experts with K triple I from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., where everyone in the community is going to be allowed, are be calling K triple I to ask many agencies, there's about to be 17 different agencies there tonight, to answer their questions, let them know what resources are available in our community, and as well as make sure that they know the right avenues to gain and access those resources. Thursday, we're having a Poloxing slash Zumba class with the information available as well there at Delmar College from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for anyone that wants to come out. It is all free services. And then Friday, we're going to be doing a training from 9:00 to 3:00 at Delmar College in recognition of teen dating violence. So it, it's an amazing, a lot of different events going on. I encourage everyone to be there, so that way not only is the public able to ask our department's questions, but maybe even ask you guys questions that we're not able to answer, so. Thank you guys again for recognizing this week.
Thank you. Thank you for all the great work you're doing individually with victims. I mean, you meet one-on-one with them, you get involved with their, their, their families, their lives, you know, their heartbreak, and I am truly, every time you're in my presence, I cannot say thank you enough, but I want to also recommend that you acknowledge the other members of your team, because I know you're not doing it alone.
I completely agree. I definitely am a part of a different, a few different coalitions, and if it wasn't for them, you know, I don't know where I would be. When we leave the end of the day, I'm leaving at 8:00, 9:00 at night, I'm calling them, telling them, I made it through another day, thank you guys for being a part of it, and from CCPD to the Purple Door, to the Juvenile Justice Center Division, to, you know, the Children's Advocacy Center, there's so many different departments that are just here to do the right thing, and it's not about the pay, it's not about, you know, the recognition, it's just about, again, caring enough to do the right thing and maybe hopefully not needing this position in the future. You know, that is the goal. Like John Lennon said, for the child abuse, maybe next year, we won't have to have a child abuse unit, because maybe that will stop, or maybe there won't be any crime. We need to start caring about our community and caring about each other and not just about ourselves. But, thank you.
Judge, briefly, I just wanted to mention, I know, like I say, it was Nuasis County Day in, in
Like John Lennon said, for the child abuse, maybe next year, we won't have to have a child abuse unit, because maybe that will stop. Or maybe there won't be any crime. We need to start caring about our community and caring about each other and not just about ourselves. But thank you.
Judge, briefly, I just wanted to mention, I know, like I say, it was Nuaces County Day in Austin Monday, but I did make good use of my time in not being there in Austin with you on Monday. I did attend the very moving ceremony, as it always is, on behalf of Court for National Crime Victims Rights Week. It's very, it was, again, it was very well done. It's always very moving. Those wreaths always kind of, you know, remind you of exactly why we're here. I appreciate the thought that we'll never, hopefully, that we can do something enough to stop and not need those positions. But in reality, we will always need those positions, even if there's not a forum. And certainly, we appreciate all that, those folks that were there and many of the victims were there and spoke. And one lady was, reminded me, she was my, she was my melody choir church choir teacher back when I was a kid. And she was one of the victims that spoke, Ms. Bloom. And it was, it was a very nice ceremony and very moving. And again, it's not symbolic. It is symbolic, but it's not symbolic. This really does represent a significant problem in our community and a significant problem in our country and in our world. And we've got to keep the focus on it. We've got to keep reminding people that this is something that we need to focus on. So thank you for doing it and for passing this resolution, is, I think, is just a small thing that we can do, but it's certainly something that we can use our bully pulpits for to talk about and to make sure that people realize that it's a big, big problem.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for representing the court so well on Monday. Is there any further discussion, Commissioners? Hearing none. We already received our motion in a second. I'll call for the question if all will signify by saying aye in support of this resolution. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you and thank you again to everybody.
And Judge, next item, we may have some telecommunicators that may want to stand with me. Are there? I know we have safe diggers. That's next.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll go ahead and read the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas every year, I'm sorry. Whereas every day, at Corpus Christi Police Department Metrocom, dedicated public safety telecommunicators answer our calls for service. They receive and dispatch our calls for help to local police fire departments facilitating the execution of emergency rescue and law enforcement operations in Nuaces County. Whereas the men and women who work in Metrocom serve as the vital links between our community and all emergency services. They are truly the first responders within our community, though rarely recognized because they are not physically at the scene. Whereas the time has arrived to show our appreciation for Metrocom employees and the nation's public safety telecommunicators alike. Therefore, a week has been set aside to recognize these outstanding individuals for a job well done. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Nuaces County Commissioners Court, that Nuaces County proclaims April 14th through 20th, 2019, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Nuaces County, Texas. We encourage all citizens to thank them for a job well done and to recognize them as calm in chaos and the voice of hope to those who really need it.
So moved. Second.
Having a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Court would like to recognize Fire Chief Rocha. Welcome and good morning.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, Robert Rocha, Fire Chief for the Fire Department. Let me just say, Tyner hit a home run with the words of the proclamation. Those, the emergency communicators are the, truly the first responder and the link between people who need help and those who come and help. So thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. Thank you. And please relay to all of those wonderful men and women that are on the line, truly on the line with us, when we look for those emergency, for that emergency help, how much we appreciate their work. And also, the court would like to recognize our own emergency director and manager, Melissa Mungia.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
I just wanted to say, this is a great week of dedication to do. I think some of us in this room have probably had that moment in our life where we've had to make that phone call for someone very special. So this is a great dedication to do for our dispatchers. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You know, just real quick, being a Metrocom, you know, on that radio, it really takes a special person, you know. And I've been at the other end because of the police officer, you know. And all the officers, you know, we're always going 100 miles an hour. And, you know, we were panicking because of things. And it didn't mean for that communicator, being that they're so calm and telling us to hold off, stay off the air, we'll call you, you know, although I know that it's stressful for them, but, I mean, they're, they're the type of person that it takes a special, very special type person to be able to go through this stressful situations without getting excited.
I agree.
You know, and that's where, that's where he saves lives, you know. And sometimes we forget about them, you know, and I think that I'm glad we have this here today, because I know as a police officer, I know they save me a lot of times.
Absolutely.
So I want to thank them for that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Having heard a motion in a second, do I, can I ask that all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much for taking time to being here this morning.
On the next
Actually, excuse me. Not only are you here, but your men and women were here yesterday, helping somebody get out of an elevator. I was on the telephone, driving back from Austin, when I was notified by my sister, who was on the fourth floor, that the power was out, as if it's my fault or something.
Judge, it's all your fault.
It was promptly followed by my significant other, who was on floor seven.
You're the judge. That's how it works.
And at any rate, I actually timed it. Within two minutes, everybody had created a response. As the power went out, completely unexpectedly, there was people who were stuck in elevators. It was responded to by the Fire Department, although I'm sorry, I was not here to personally thank them. I was on the phone with them after the fact. We take for granted how important it is that you answer the call. It was a brief power outage. It did cause some havoc. But thank you to the men and women who responded. Chief, I know whoever was stuck in that elevator must have been scared. It's a very scary feeling to be stranded in a closed, confined space. And it just dawned on me when I saw you how, how so rarely we get to say gracias and thank you. So thank you.
Thank you. You know, we're very lucky here in Nuaces County and the city of Corpus Christi to have a system that really works when it's, and it starts with the communicators, taking the call, processing it, and getting it to the dispatcher, so the dispatcher can then can send the appropriate resources. So thank you for the kind words, and I will share that
Please, please do.
The men and women of the department.
Thank you. Thanks again. Just sorry, everybody, it just gave me that moment to be able to articulate that. And I believe we did pass that resolution and we're on to Nuaces County Safe Digging Month.
And I know that we have some safe diggers that want to stand with me.
Safety first.
I'll go ahead and proceed, Judge.
Please do.
Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Texas is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. Whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. Whereas the Gulf Coast Damage Prevention Council, along with the City of Corpus Christi, Nuaces County Local Emergency Planning Committee, are dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in the city of Corpus Christi and Nuaces County and promotes the National 811 Notification System in an effort to reduce these damages. Whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility. By using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Corpus Christi can save time and money and help keep our infrastructures safe and connected. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Nuaces County Commissioners Court, that Nuaces County proclaims on behalf of the Pipeline Damage Prevention Subcommittee of the City of Corpus Christi, Nuaces County Local Emergency Planning Committee, and the Gulf Coast Damage Prevention Council, the month, April 2019, as Nuaces County Safe Digging Month, and encourages contractors, homeowners throughout Nuaces County to always dial 811 before digging. Safe excavation is no accident.
I couldn't agree more. Can I have a motion? And a motion in a second. And now we'll open the floor for discussion and welcome back to the podium, Chief Rocha.
Thank you, Judge. I'm, as they say in baseball, I'm doing a doubleheader today.
I like that.
But I will tell you, this is an example of great cooperation between the county and the city. The LEPC, Local Emergency Planning Committee, is housed over at Fire Headquarters. But as you know, my appointment is made by the county judge. And it's an example of where the city, the county, industry, and the public join together to educate the public more, but to make our community safer. I'm happy to have with me a couple of people that I'd like to introduce to you. I have Steve Geary, who is here. He is a co-chairman of the LEPC Pipeline Subcommittee. I also have Joanne Salji, who is the LEPC Coordinator. And Dave Cave from Sitco is the vice chair of the LEPC. And at this time, I'd like to have the Subcommittee Chairperson come up and just say a few words about safe digging.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'd like to thank Chief Rocha.
Judge, Commissioners, I thank you all. I'm not much of a guy for words, but safety is everybody's business. It's, it's not just this month. It's 12 months out of the year. Keep every, keep our families and the local community safe. That's, that's our mission. I'd also like to take this opportunity to promote one of our events that we're going to have in October. It's Safe Digging Month. I mean, it's a safe digging seminar and it's to promote, you know, education and things to our excavators. You know, a lot of municipalities don't have a whole lot of training opportunities. This is free to them. We'd like to welcome everybody to come out. And there's free lunch.
Sounds great. Can't beat that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I'd like to say something. I'd like to commend the number of people that have joined us this morning here at Commissioners Court, not only for the sacrifice of your valuable time, but to really show in solidarity how important this issue is. I kind of come from the energy experience, the energy world, where we often talk about spaghetti, which is all those pipelines that, that cross. And the truth is, people won't ever know about folks like yourselves, who are out there every day, making sure as new infrastructure is built, that old infrastructure is protected. And it's protected so that we won't have interruptions to either vital utilities like water or gas, or worse, that we are always being incredibly safe, you know, so that we can prevent any type of explosion. I think the motto of this county is the same as the Girl Scouts, it's be prepared. And I want to thank all of you for being here, but for helping us stay prepared. And if there are resources that you feel that we are lacking, Chief Rocha, we, this court would like to hear about them. If there are resources that you think we could be expanding upon, this court would like to hear about them. I really believe that you are an amazing resource for this county. I look around other, and I won't kind of go into it at this moment, but I look around the state at other situations that have recently happened. And I, and I think to myself, do I have the team in place? If ever called upon, will I have a plan of action for preparedness? And I look at you guys, and I feel so good this morning. I have to tell you, I've known Dave Cave now for a long time through the Port of Corpus Christi. I sat on the Security Committee. He had, I've been trained and educated well. But today, I know that I have a lot more friends besides Dave Cave, helping this county out. I don't know all of your names, but I want to thank you personally for keeping us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. And I appreciate those comments. I've had the privilege to working with each and every one of the judges here on the panel of the Commissioners Court. And so it's a great team that you have here also. And so I look forward to working with you and would love to be able to brief you at any time. I usually do an annual briefing of the LEPC for the county judge. I'll get ahold of Melissa and Joanne and maybe we can schedule that. But I'd love to give you a briefing as to what we're doing.
Thank you. And it might be worthy of posting it, Commissioners, if, as a workshop, if you all would like to attend. Every one of our precincts has infrastructure that needs protecting. And if you don't know where yours is, this is a good time to ask and find out what it is about your precinct that, 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 you know, is being, is being thought about in preparation for that day that we never want to happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
So we have a motion in a second. If you'll stand, we'll take a picture if you'll have us. We'd like to have you, for sure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Would you like to join us for a picture to commemorate Safe Digging Month? And I don't know if you do social media, but post it and let them know you have our support.
We need to get Mila, those little chairs. We've got to roll it back here. Hi, Barbara.
You got me and Brett.
We're just on ice. Christine and Barbara.
Yeah. Everything well?
Good morning.
Good talk.
Good morning.
But yes.
For the most part. I'll go over here.
And again, thank you, sir, for your comments. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning.
Richard Park, Penal.
I'll squeeze here. It's an advantage of being five foot and nothing. Only in, only in height, though.
This is great.
Okay. Y'all ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. And I think Melissa.
One, two, three.
Coming at us from Miss Sandra.
Thank you.
That's the paparazzi right there.
How you doing?
Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again.
Thanks again for coming.
I'll see you soon.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Probably forgot those other ones. That would have been the one. I thought about that after they left.
Well, they're still, they're still here.
Of the, I mean, victims. Yeah, victims and child abuse.
But they're internal. You all can get a picture with us anytime you want.
I do if you don't.
We're sorry we didn't call you up. We just, it was just an oversight on my part. Apologize. Tyner, at this time, we're going to move to talking about extending our support for the sunset date for the Property Redevelopment and Tax Abatement Act, which is otherwise famously known as the 312s. Set the table for us so that they, so that Commissioners and the audience can understand what's at stake right now with current legislation and why this support is being sought after this morning at Commissioners Court.
Well, the way I understand it, Judge, Chapter 312 is the county's authority to have a tax abatement policy. And I spoke to Mike Culbertson of the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation. I thought he was going to be here, but they are supportive, and I notified him of this item. And in fact,
Well, they better be. They've only given 100 of them.
That's right. And, yes, of course, they're very supportive. Just for your information, Chapter 312 and Chapter 313, 313 applies to school districts. Hugo Berlanga called me yesterday. I'm going to ask that if the court approves this, that the clerk, please pass this one out for signature, because we need to get it to Austin immediately.
That's my, that's my understanding. Commissioners, since we don't have a member, are we sure that the EDC is not here? Okay. Let me, let me speak on behalf of this. I believe this to be an effective and important tool of the government code that allows counties to remain competitive in the attracting of business and economic development to their region. But in that realm, we all do, of course, regionally work together. But Nueces County has embarked upon, as you all know, because you voted upon it, a new industrial commission. And these are the tools that are so important to businesses, to be able to make the decision to come to our community. However, the sunset refers to the expiration of such a tool. And therefore, what we seek today is this commission's support in extending that sunset date. And Tyner, will you remind the Commissioners' Court what the date is for the extension?
I believe it's a 10-year, but I...
I think that would be correct. And so it would be available to us as a tool. But make no mistake, through an open and transparent process, we would all be able to make those decisions together. This, again, is the permissive opportunity to be able to be competitive. I can't tell you how many, in the last, you know, six years that I was involved, the Port of Corpus Christi, how many companies came here, but came here when we were in hot and heavy competition with communities from Mississippi and Louisiana and other cities.
So moved.
Do I have a second? I wish it was this easy in Austin. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Let's hope they see it the same way.
The next two items, Judge, were at the request of Kevin Kishnik, our tax assessor-collector.
Okay. Is he here with us this morning to present? Okay, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and read these, Judge.
Okay.
Whereas, under Section 11.135 of the Texas Tax Code, a property owner can continue to claim a homestead exemption and over-65 exemption on a residential structure rendered inhabitable or unusable by casualty wind or water damage for only two years after a natural disaster without physically inhabiting the property. Whereas Hurricane Harvey victims are facing significant delays in the reconstruction of their homes due to current labor shortages and delays negotiating settlements with insurance companies, putting them at risk of losing their homestead exemptions and over-65 exemptions. Whereas Senate Bills 443 and 540 will extend the two-year limit to five years for property located within a disaster area declared by the governor, thus alleviating some tax burden on Hurricane Harvey victims during reconstruction. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Nueces County hereby supports Senate Bill 443 and Senate Bill 540 and other legislation that provides for tax relief from Hurricane Harvey victims, including giving an extension up to five years for claiming a homestead or over-65 exemption on real property that is still being reconstructed.
So moved.
Having a motion in a second, or any discussion?
Just briefly, Judge. Again, I think this is significant, not to go through without a little comment, and that is, and I think Kevin's worked on this quite a bit, and this is really a big deal, because there are still people in Port Aransas that don't have houses. And only having, and we're coming up on the two-year mark, and a lot of the reasons they don't have houses is because of their insurance delays, or dealing with TWIA, or FEMA, or one of those wonderful government agencies that I, and I say that with great sarcasm, just in case anybody's wondering. So this is really important that this happens. This is really a humanitarian act, I think. It gives people the opportunity to rebuild without feeling like if they don't rebuild within two years, then they're going to lose their homestead exemptions or their, you know, other pertinent exemptions that we're facing. So again, this is very, very, very important, and I appreciate that this is being looked at in legislature, and we definitely need to add our support to this.
Yes, and I was with Kevin, and both he and I are hoping to testify here. This is going to be in Property Tax Committee with Senator, Benton Court is chair, but Senator Inahosa sitting on that committee. So I don't think we could have a greater friend in this arena. Having heard a motion in a second, all those in favor of supporting this very important bill for our citizens, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign.
And Judge, when we approve these kind of things, I guess that just kind of automatically adds it to our lobbyists' agenda to help us wherever they need to help us.
Yeah. To be honest with you, we've been working, if allowed, is okay if I can kind of elaborate on this. One of the things that is happening, and it's so good for, I'm glad you asked that question, is that it goes without saying that we have a specific legislative agenda, but then there's also those very broad, you know, language-type wordsmiths that we, wordsmithing of our agenda at the beginning, which is, look, we're going to protect our property values. And that's just sort of an overall mission and goal.
Right. No unfunded mandates, things like that.
Right. Things like that. And these kind of come in. I don't want you to think that we're not taking care of them, but I think it's so important when we get these letters of support. This commissioner will trigger now a letter from me that I can now send to Senator Inahosa. It can be read as written testimony into the record. But I'm so pleased to tell you that we just, we have not left any stone unturned if it affects our county. Our legislative team is on it. But sometimes these support letters are more critical than others. And on property tax, I think this one's important.
Yeah, and I especially think this one, too, needs to go to Senator, to all our delegation every time, but certainly to Senator Cole Course as well, since she represents Port Aransas and several of the coastal communities that were affected by this, too. So I just want to make sure they know it and they see it, and I know they're on board. But this is just important stuff, and it really does affect our citizens. So I appreciate that effort.
This is very equitable. This is a very important piece of legislation. Okay, so I think you're ready to go to Number 10, which is also a Kishnik. Did we vote? We voted already.
And this one as well, this is in opposition to House Bill 11, which actually provides for the transfer of the driver's license function from DPS to the Department of Motor Vehicles. This, I'll read this resolution, which basically says, "Let's hold off." Whereas, House Bill 11 of the '86 Texas Legislative Session provides for the transfer of the driver's license function from the Department of Public Safety to the Department of Motor Vehicles. Whereas, such a move may ultimately cause Texas counties to be required to perform some or all of these functions without adequate funding to do so. Whereas, a more prudent method for determining whether such a transfer makes sense for cost savings and efficiency is to provide a detailed study to the legislature in 2021, rather than pass a bill now with such great uncertainty. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Nueces County hereby generally opposes House Bill 11, which provides for transferring the driver's license function from the Department of Public Safety to the Department of Motor Vehicles. Further, the court urges the Texas Legislature to require a study of such transfer to be done, to be provided to the legislature in 2021, before such a bill is passed into law.
A motion. Second.
Having heard a motion in a second...
Judge, some discussion on that. I was with Kevin as we were speaking with an official up there in Austin on Monday, close to the Speaker of the House, who basically indicated that this is a priority for the Speaker, and that more than likely, it's going to happen. So I think what we really need to do is what we're asking for in this resolution is for a delay that will allow us to be able to collectively, as a state, have a study done, be able to really work out the details of that kind of transfer of not only function, but cost and responsibility down to the county levels. So this is really important that we vote in support of this opposition, because at least it will give us some time to plan for it. And I don't think, I mean, even 2020 is still too early. I was told even maybe 2021 may be too early. But no later than 2022 is when this function will be upon us. And so that's something we have to look at and plan for on the cost and the facilities.
The facilities.
Facilities and staff.
The lines.
So...
Oh, my gosh.
You know, nothing's over till it's over. We know that. But politically, if the Speaker is really, truly pushing this and feels that this is a priority, then he's going to get his votes lined up there in the House. So we've got to hope that this will help send a message, especially to our local delegation, that there be no fudging on this, that we remain unified in support for Nueces County, and that they back what we need, which is obviously, we don't need further unfunded mandates. But if it is going to happen, at least give some time to the counties in the state of Texas to be able to plan out, to study, and then determine when is the best course of action, what is that actual timeline that this is thrown upon us. Because sooner is not better in this case. So we've got to hope for something delayed at least by a few years.
Well, and I think the key on this is, and I can't, I read the bill, and I can't determine, you know, if the funding part of this, you know, that's the real uncertainty, is this just another unfunded mandate? I can't imagine, well, I can't imagine, but I can't imagine that they would just give it to us and not give us funding, since they're paying for it out of the DPS budget now. But I don't see that really clearly articulated in this bill, and I think there's some devil in the details type thing. And maybe, maybe, and I don't know, I haven't talked to Kevin in detail about some of this, but maybe at the end of the day, down the road, maybe it is better for the citizens for us to do it, but not just thrown at us with no cost, yeah, no funds, and we don't have the facilities. Oh, my gosh, the lines will be out the door. I mean, they've had to change that whole system at DPS. You have to call and get an appointment now. And I will tell you, getting a driver's license at the DPS, respectfully to the DPS, that's the biggest pain in the butt there is. But that doesn't mean I want that pain in the butt over here without some, you know, restrictions and some cost analysis and things like this. So this seems like a pragmatic approach to it, is to say, let's pause for a minute, and let's see what it's going to cost us and how it's going to work, and see how we can make this a smooth transition if that's where we're going, instead of just, here you go, take it, run with it. So I'm okay with this.
Maybe they'll give us a building.
You know, I don't know.
Yes, so House Bill 11 is something that is now allocated in the Transportation Committee. It's chaired by Terry Canales. Chairman Canales and I have spoken about this, along with Kevin. So Kevin and I are definitely monitoring, and you've honed in on the one issue, which is there are no parameters that this bill sets forth. We are looking for a committee substitute, so we'll see what happens here, but it is, our views have been articulated. And again, I want to commend Nueces County electeds for working together. It was an incredible effort. This has not been done before, where tax assessor collectors and, you know, just different elected judges, working through the Board of Judges, and county commissioners, and county judges, working together so that our agendas are one. And I think that's really speaking with one voice and one message. Today, your support for this will allow, again, for the county judge to write a letter and deliver written testimony to Chairman Canales, so...
And I think, Judge, you know, and I think Commissioner Mazzas has kind of laid the appropriate, you know, deal on this. In the letter, it should say, you know, we're not just, we're hardcore against this, we're just, we just, what the heck? I mean, we're against this as written, because we don't have any parameters, any direction, any whatever.
Do we know what the reasoning was to move it? What was the reason? Does anyone know? You would have to have a reason, I would think.
They don't want to put up with it no more.
Maybe DPS just didn't want to do it anymore, and then went to the governor. I don't know, or the Speaker. I don't know. But...
Well, I think the Department of Motor Vehicles really wants it. We're talking like over $400 million, I read about in the bill analysis.
About money. Okay.
All the troopers are in the valley.
Again, I'd be happy to look at it if that money's going to flow down to us, and we're going to, they're going to give us money to pay for it and provide facilities and provide... I'd be happy to look at that, but just to be crammed down your throat with, as a potential unfunded mandate, again, and this is huge.
All the troopers are in the valley now, so I don't have troopers here.
Yeah, I have a lot of thoughts on this, but I think in the interest of time, I think we, I think I would encourage you guys to, you know, seek out our legislative consultants. I think you'll be pleased to hear their thoughts on it and how they think this bill is going to move. So, all those in favor for this support, actually, let me see how it's written, because it should be against. In opposition to House Bill Number 11, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Thank you, Edward. Just about to look up and ask for it. At this time, I'm going to be reviewing the public comment signees. I have actually quite a few this morning. I recognize them. Maria Bedia, Director of our Grants Department, is here with Natalie, and welcome. You're going to, you just said general comment. Tell us the nature.
Yes. As you know, we've had a vacancy in my department for a while now, and I have filled that position. So I wanted to take a brief moment to introduce you to our new Grants Assistant. She is, she did come from us, from the private sector. So this is actually her first Commissioners' Court, so this is exciting. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to Kristy Gonzalez.
That's great.
Hello. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to meeting with all of you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, you join Wonder Woman's staff, so I'm really excited.
Your dream team is complete.
My dream team is complete.
We look forward to, yeah, we look forward to continuing the forward momentum that we've been working on since I took over the department. So, you know, she is external, so there's going to be a little bit of a learning curve, but we are confident that we will be doing great things.
A big learning curve.
Yes. Welcome to county government.
But you have great experts at your side. And I'm going to say this, get ready, because there is not a project that I do not look for a grant. I mean, it's just the nature of county government. We're short on funds, so we look to see where our resources can be leveraged. So welcome aboard, and thank you for filling the post.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to recognize Kathy. I saw you in the audience. Hi, Kathy. Kathy Mills, District Attorney's Office. Shara, do you want to come? Are you all a package here?
I'm unrelated.
You're unrelated? Okay. Just so often, you work together. Forgive me.
That's right. That's right, Judge.
Go ahead.
I'm coming to the court today. As y'all know, I'm the Second Assistant District Attorney, Kathy Mills. I'm coming to y'all today as a private citizen, as the president of the Coastal Bend Women's Law Association. Let me back up and share a story with you briefly. I, at one of our recent events at the Yacht Club, was in line. And the way the women's bar works is, we all go, we do the buffet, and then we go upstairs, and we hear from a wonderful speaker. We do this event once a month. I was in line, and there was two ladies in front of me, much my seniors, very gray. I won't point out how many wrinkles, but definitely a generation or two above me. And one of them leaned over to the other and said, "Who are all those ladies coming in? They're dressed so nicely. They're going upstairs. Who are they? Who are these women?" And the other woman turned to the other and said, "I saw something about lawyers. I think they must be the lawyers' wives." Oh. Our group has women ages 24 to probably 85, if I had to guess. But I'd share this story with you, because women are becoming leaders. We have the first woman county judge. We have other women commissioners. We have the first fifth administrative region judge. It's time for us as leaders to get on board with females in the community. That is so important, and the reason I'm talking to you specifically, and I know it was not intentional, but at the last Commissioners' Meeting, one of the Commissioners called to hear from the DA himself, because he was "the man." I know it was not intentional. It was not meant to be derogatory. It was not meant to be attackatory on women. But I bring it to you, to encourage you, to raise up the level of discussion. We can no longer address men as "the man." And I've been told at 5:00, when I left for work one day, "Are you going to cook for your husband now that you're a wife?" "Oh, I was going to watch a football game."
Let's call them out. Which man said it?
I don't, I don't, yeah, right. I'm not here to attack the Commissioners' Court by any means. I'm here to help promote the raising of our language and the raising of how we speak about each other, for men and women. We need to approach it with a level of respect and dignity that we all deserve. So I'm just here to encourage the court to do that.
Thank you so much.
You know, things are changing. Yesterday, I had a discussion with my wife, and she says she was in charge from now on.
That's right. And I would also like to commend my office and the District Attorney, Mark Gonzalez. I had a child. I was pregnant. I tried cases, and then I came back, and I was breastfeeding my son. And so I needed a pump, and I needed private space. And I want to commend the judges upstairs for accommodating me during that time. But it was easy for me, because I'm a Type A, and I will demand that space and time. It's not easy for every female to do that and to ask for that space and time. So I would encourage the court to consider that issue going forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Shara. I like her. Yeah.
Can we just call you "the woman"? Would that be, would that be, all right, okay.
Yesterday, I had a discussion with my wife, and she says she was in charge from now on.
That's right. And I would also like to commend my office and the District Attorney, Mark Gonzalez. I had a child, I was pregnant, I tried cases, and then I came back and I was breastfeeding my son, and so I needed a pump and I needed private space, and I want to commend the judges upstairs for accommodating me during that time. But it was easy for me because I'm a Type A and I will demand that space and time. It's not easy for every female to do that and to ask for that space and time, so I would encourage the court to consider that issue going forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Shara. I like her. Yeah.
Can we just call you the woman? Would that be, would that be, all right, okay. Can't do that then.
Okay.
Hello, Commissioners Court, good morning.
Good morning.
Glad to speak to you guys again. I wanted to come up to you guys today and just take a brief opportunity, I have here Crystal Mathis, who works in our awesome Child Abuse Division, to address some concerns that I have, and the concerns that I have, I'm not accusing anyone, so let me just say that now, but I bring it to your attention because I know you guys can correct the concerns that I have, I know you can resolve these issues that I have. The first day that I had a full-time day here was the day I was here in court with you guys. That was my first morning. I will say it was definitely unexpected, but I was glad it happened because it brought awareness to me what was happening in my department, the Victim Assistance Coordinator position. And I went home that day, and I thought, how can we correct it? I love hearing the concerns, but I also want to know what the solution is. What can we do to correct it so we can move forward? Because I love my community, I love the victims that I serve, this is a passion, what can we do? So I brainstormed. I have written several different grants, those include the Justice Assistance Grant, the Juvenile Justice Grant, the Victims of Act Grant, and the Violence Against Women's Act Grant, as well as the other Victim Assistance Grant with the Attorney General's Office. I've written them, I've presented them, and I've got the funding from previous agencies I've worked for. I have a master, or excuse me, two bachelor's degree from our awesome Texas University of Corpus Christi, as well as working on my master's in social work from the Texas State University over in San Marcos. So I know these statistics, and they might be new to you guys, but these statistics come from the Texas Department of Public Safety, the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services, the Texas Department of Transportation, and the United States Census Bureau. They are only available up to 2017 right now, so they are the most current statistics available, they are online, they're open to the public, but I wanted you guys to know that in 2017, the United States Census Bureau estimated that Nuasis County had a population of 3,061, 361,221 people in this county alone. According to the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services, in 2017, 1,244 children were confirmed victims of child abuse and neglect. The Texas Department of Public Safety confirmed for 2017 that there were 24 homicides, there were 361 sexual assault victims, 491 victims of robbery, 1,783 victims of aggravated assault, 3,168 victims of family violence. And then lastly, the Department of Transportation for 2017 reported 442 driving under the influence, injuries, and crashes. That saddens me because, again, I live in this community, my daughter was born in this community, that's 7,513 victims for 2017 alone. That's not including 2018, and now we are in 2019. When I looked at these statistics, the first thing I did was go into our, my lovely supervisors, you just saw one of them, Kathy, the woman, and I asked them, guys, what are we doing about this? You know, because the public is right, we don't, I'm one person to service thousands of victims, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna correct this? They told me, we currently have 42 prosecutors, we have 15 secretaries, four investigators, two temporary employees, and two victim assistance coordinators. That's 65 employees providing justice for over 7,000 victims for 2017 alone. That's, it's not enough, that's just not enough. And I thought, again, because I'm a solutions person, let's figure it out, guys, we're gonna figure this out. I looked at the grants, I met with Ms. Maria from the Grants Department on the fifth floor, had a meeting with her and Matt Manning, and said, look, we've already passed the deadline for four of these grants. What can, these grants take me three to four months to write, to gather the statistics, to make sure we have our due diligence done, make sure it's quality work. We are literally writing the OVAG grant from the Attorney General now, because that's the last grant that's available, it's due this Friday, in weeks, but we're gonna do it because we need to, we have to, we need to get this funding in. And I thought, again, it's just not enough. We have the open position now for Victim Assistance Coordinator II for the misdemeanor side. I reached out to 22 people in our community who are victim advocates, who are qualified, educated, and have a passion. I told them, come on, guys, apply, it's available now. They went online, and they called me right back and said, Shara, what were you thinking? Did you look at that $16 pay? There's no way I can reasonably raise the three children I have, pay my mortgage, and continue on. And I told them, you're absolutely right, what can I say? I currently, this time last year, am making almost $15,000 less than what I'm accustomed to making. I have a mortgage, I am a single parent of an 11-year-old girl, who expects the world, by the way, and of the brand-new iPhone, and as well as have student loan debt that I am trying to make sure that I'm not going into default for. As I received my first paycheck last Friday, I am in straight red and had to call all my bill people and tap into that savings account. It's just not realistic to continue on a position like this, even though I have that passion, I'm going to stay here as long as I can and go into as much debt as I can to be here, to expect anyone else to do that. It's just not fair. I have Crystal here to give a little bit of information about the Prosecutor's Office, because, again, I'm not a prosecutor, so, and then we'll go ahead and conclude.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I didn't know that I was gonna be speaking today, so I didn't prepare anything formal, but I can tell you that when I started law school, I never anticipated becoming a prosecutor. I'm the first lawyer in my family, so I didn't know what to expect. I interned at the DA's office in 2011 while I was waiting for my bar results. I absolutely fell in the job, fell in love with the job, and that's because I was in the Child Protection Unit under Brittany Jensen, I don't know if y'all remember her, but I fell in love with the position, and that's all I've ever wanted to do since I got my, since I was licensed and since I was hired. I worked six years to get into the Child Protection Unit, and I couldn't be happier. But last week was just one of those weeks where it just makes you want to throw in the towel, throw your hands in the air, and say, I can't do this anymore. I put in everything I have to the job on a daily basis, and I was just at a point, I'm like, I can't take this enough, or take this anymore. But at the same time, I had to look at the job, look at my student loan debt, and look at the benefits of working for the government, and I saw myself in a position of, I can't afford to work for the government, but I can't afford not to. Because after being with the county now for all, over seven years, I know that a lot of my income, my, or my student loans are on an income-based system, so every payment that I make goes directly towards interest, and that interest has accrued over these past seven years. So I'm in a position now where all I can do is hope that I get to that 10 years, and hope that the public's student loan forgiveness program is still available at that point. And if it's not, I don't know what I'm gonna do. But I know that now, I still have to put my groceries on a credit card, and as a prosecutor, as an attorney, I shouldn't have to do that. My paycheck should be able to cover basic necessities like groceries. So I'm here today in support of higher salaries and better resources for the District Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And guys, we don't, again, this isn't accusing, forgive me. Oh, I'm sorry.
Crystal, but before you leave, just because I, thoroughness, would you be so kind as to, to sign for me here?
Ms. Canales, Judge Canales, that's my mistake.
It's all right.
I penciled her in next to my name, and I apologize for that.
It's okay.
No problem, no problem.
Just at the bottom.
Thank you. And guys, again, we don't bring this as accusatory, we don't bring this to your attention because we're accusing any one of you guys, we bring this to your attention because only this office, this is a matter only the Commissioners Court can assist in. We understand, you know, the position you guys are in, we love this community, we love you guys, and I see each and every one of y'all in our community advocating for Nuasis County. This is an amazing town, we need to keep amazing people in it. So again, and as I, I encourage you guys, as the budget plans come up this summer, to just think about us and remember our department, and I hope that you take the opportunity, not to just talk about making the changes, but actually take the opportunity to create those changes, so that this time next year, we have a Department of Victim Advocates in our, you know, in our agency, we have 80 prosecutors, I mean, something, and not only are we getting the bodies, but we're paying them enough to where they can support their families. So again, thank you so much for letting me speak, and I hope you guys have a good day.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call Victoria Flores to the podium.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, good morning, Elizabeth. Please go forward.
My name is Victoria Flores, and I work for the District Attorney's Office. I'm speaking on behalf of all the county employees. The limited parking space and the citations we've been given lately for parking at the two-hour, limited parking, there's not enough parking space, Nuasis County Sheriff's Office has taken half of the parking already and gated their parking space, so it's just our concern, you know, do we, do we, can we get a permit, some kind of, you know, so we won't get cited for parking at the two-hour space? Or employees are having to run to their cars and within the hour and a half to go find a parking, so we don't get ticketed. So if y'all can figure something out for us.
And I'm just gonna remind the audience, in public comment, we don't speak back, I just, just to, so that you don't look at us like, why is she saying nothing?
We can't engage, but we can direct if wanted.
We can direct, and, and.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Public works or something to figure out.
These ears are big for a reason, I hear everything.
Who's in charge of that net, or someone?
Yeah, we're looking.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's just our concern. We can, it's.
Thank you. Elizabeth, thank you so much. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna call, it looks like I have District Assistant District Attorney, or First Assistant District Attorney, Matt Manning, signed up. Is there anybody else with you that you would like to have join? Cindy? Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all for giving us just a moment. As you know, I'm Matt Manning, I'm First Assistant DA in the DA's office, this is Cindy Villarreal, who is our new site and release coordinator. I first want to thank the Commissioners Court for having the foresight last year to give us a site and release coordinator. Cindy has been invaluable in helping us work this program and in helping us make sure that we kind of looked at every eventuality before rolling the program out. I know that time is precious, so I'll keep it as short as possible. The program is going live on April 24th, so.
Is this an agenda item, or are you doing public comment?
It's in public comment.
Okay.
Yeah, it was an agenda item, it's my understanding that it's been tabled, but we.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
But we just wanted, no, no, no problem.
My apologies for interrupting you, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, just so I can know for process, would you like us to advance the tabling?
I didn't know you were tabling it, sorry, that's what I wasn't aware of.
I'm sorry, let me just say this, I said that incorrectly. Would you like us to promote this agenda item? So that.
I don't know what we're, I don't know why.
I'm just gonna table it, and can't keep him from speaking, but.
Okay, we'll just deal with it when it comes up.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're fine, just wanting, out of courtesy, I defer to my Commissioners on items of interest to them.
Sure.
Okay? All right, forgive me, please proceed.
No problem, Your Honor, and we would say this is an item of interest to the public, which is why it's imperative that it gets to the public, whether through an agenda item or through public comment, but at any rate, we want the court to know that on the 24th of April, we're going live. What we mean by going live is that is the day that all of the law enforcement agencies in Nuasis County will start citing people for the seven offenses under which they can receive a citation rather than being arrested. We have met with all the law enforcement agencies, we've retooled the citations, we have left no stone unturned, and literally thought about every part of the process, and to truncate it as much as possible, essentially, the process is gonna work the same way that it does when you receive a traffic citation for a Class C misdemeanor. All the people who are cited within a two-week period will come to the Judge James Klegar Central Jury Room, 14 days after essentially they're given a citation, on the second or fourth Wednesday, and they'll be processed that day from 8:30 until essentially we're done with all of the people there. The offenses that are listed are primarily low-level Class A, Class Bs, obviously all Class As and Class Bs, so possession of marijuana, possession of controlled substance, synthetic marijuana, theft, criminal mischief, so on and so forth. We just got confirmation that the machine that the Commissioners Court gave us money for to purchase, actually somewhere here in Corpus Christi, was delivered today, as a matter of fact, so, perfect timing. We're excited about that, that gives us the opportunity to run the backgrounds and get the fingerprints for all of the people who have been cited through the course of the program. Now, in terms of projections, we anticipate that we should have between 75 to 100 or so people at every arraignment, and we're excited about that because we think that gives us a substantial opportunity to alleviate the jail population, right? These are people who are being diverted from the arrest process, so we intend to keep internal metrics to make sure that we can deliver to the Commissioners Court deliverables and show you what the actual numbers have been. But we're gonna go live on that day, we also have a full press rollout that we're going to do, and we also intend to get with Rep. Henneto's office and Senator Hennahosa's office to remove part of the law that only allows those citations to be issued to Nuasis County residents, or essentially residents of the county. And the reason we think that's gonna be an issue is we think this is gonna be a particularly beneficial program as it goes to spring break, Memorial Day, times when we have a large influx of people coming to our beaches primarily, and I think it's gonna help officers significantly to have the opportunity to issue a citation rather than arrest a person, take them all the way to the jail, and be caught up for, you know, a number of hours in processing them, so. There is that issue in the law, the law only allows us to cite someone who's a resident of the county, but we intend to try to have that removed so that we can kind of broaden the base of people whom we can cite. So, I know you can't really dialogue with us and ask any questions, but I want to yield the rest of the time to Cindy Villarreal to see if she has anything to supplement.
My name is Cynthia Villarreal, Site and Release Coordinator for Nuasis County District Attorney's Office, and here in my hand, I do have the, basically, the documents that the District Attorney's Office, myself, are going to be using to inform the violator of what their instructions are, what is expected of them, when to arrive, how to dress, we're gonna make sure that they're understanding that this is not a traffic ticket, it is a citation, that they actually committed. And they do and will need to be here in order to take care of the citation. So, if you don't mind, I would like to present one, so, to each of you, so you can actually view what documents that we will be using.
Great.
And as she's doing that, just a couple of things very quickly. First, to kind of dispel some myths, so these are not offenses that will be able to be taken care of via a remote process like you would with a traffic citation. As she mentioned, people actually have to come down, but the ranges of punishment don't change, so on a Class A misdemeanor, you know, you're looking at up to a year in jail, that's the same range of punishment, nothing changes. The only thing that changes is the inception of the case is not an arrest, instead it's an issuance of a citation. That's the only thing that changes, the rest of the process is the same, they will be able to potentially resolve the case through a pretrial diversion, probation, and all of the other mechanisms that we use now. So that's essentially kind of the rundown of the site and release program, we're very excited, we've, we've kind of told everything up, and it's gonna be running in 14 days, so, or on the 24th, rather, so, we're very excited about that, and if you do have any questions outside of the public comment, please feel free to contact me or contact the office. And finally, I do want to echo the sentiments of Ms. Mathis and just say that, you know, we have a body of some of the best and brightest lawyers in the state of Texas, but frankly, we cannot keep some of the best and brightest lawyers because their salaries are not competitive, they just frankly are not competitive, and we've had people leave who state how much they love the office, how much they love all of the transformative measures that Mr. Gonzalez has put in, but they just can't afford to feed their families. As you know, many of us have an albatross of student loan debt, north of $150,000, law school's not cheap, and it's very difficult to keep the best and brightest in our office for a long period of time. And here's the thing, it's essentially cognitive dissonance to say that we care about public safety but not make an investment in human capital for said public safety. So I would ask the Commissioners Court, as we go forward and as we begin the budget process here soon, that you keep that at the forefront of your mind, that's not just us asking for money, that's the reality of our office and the reality of what it takes to keep the best and brightest protecting Nuasis County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, in the vein of not engaging but directing, as Commissioner Mottas pointed out, I am interested to know more about this, only, Nuasis County can only cite Nuasis County residents, and whether we need to add that potentially to our legislative agenda, so possibly that may need to be something we would like to put on the.
I'm gonna assume that you're directing it to County Attorney Jimenez, and maybe we can get briefed on that, and.
I don't know if, I don't want, I don't know if we want an advisory, if we just want to bring it back up.
Just an advisory, maybe.
Or maybe we need to put on the agenda that, if we think that's something that we would support the DA in their efforts, that we would want to put it on our next agenda as a resolution to add that. as a resolution to add that to our legislative agenda, so that is...
And I'm going to be very candid, since we're just talking this way and not this way.
Right.
If we do not get that language to Austin in the next five days, that's just not going to happen. So let's talk about that, maybe as a way to, I think it's very important, and I was unaware of that issue.
Right now, yeah.
But maybe with, maybe we can get some advice from...
Is there a bill filed already?
There's not.
Okay, so there's...
No, but I would, I would tack it on as an amendment to a criminal jurisprudence bill, is the way I would handle that.
So I guess, since we, we can't engage with Mr. Manning, and I, I wasn't aware of this concern, but it's obviously...
If you can engage with me as your executive.
Yeah, so I guess my question is...
Just say, you need to go get that done.
Well, and that would be where I was going with this, if, if the Court felt that way, then certainly we could give direction to the judge, I guess. I, I just don't know, I really don't know what this issue's about, and I can't ask Mr. Manning here, so I guess I can go ask him somewhere else, but I mean, we've got to get this moving, if we, because we've only got so much time left in legislative session.
Well, and, and honestly, we do resolutions, Tyner, and I do them because I'm a big traditionalist, and I like keeping us to the same format, but I will go back and look at our legislative agenda, and that which protects us broadly should be able to help me specifically. And so let me go back to our, Tyner, will you do that for us? Will you look at our legislative agenda and see if you can find me a nexus of how I can promote with our legislative delegation this language? It's really no different than the online jury system situation.
Right.
What I would recommend, Judge, we've already done some stuff at the direction of the Board of Judges related to the online jury system.
Yes.
Trying to get an amendment done for them. With your permission, I will go ahead and plant the seed to start working on something, to start looking at a, a potential amendment to fix this, and then...
And I think you still got to bring it back.
And, but, but, yeah. But, but at least start it, and then, and then next time, bring it back and get approval to see if we can get that amendment.
Right.
Lourdes, I'm sorry.
I mean, you still have that, if you want to have some dialogue, you can still go to that, that agenda item, and then later table it.
Okay, well, could we do that?
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay, Judge? Can we go to, just, just for limited, I don't know why we're tabling, I'm okay if everybody wants to table, but can we just have a limited dialogue on, on issue, on item number...
Four A.
Four A five, right now?
Three.
Four A three.
What we need, what we want, we just...
Four A three?
I'd like to clarify that it's for the limited purpose only.
Is that for four A, I'm sorry, four A three, my bad.
Four A three.
Okay, so we're on four A three, is that right, Judge?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, can you clarify, since we're on four A three, for limited purposes only, can you tell us why that language is important so that we can potentially direct?
Absolutely. First, I want to, I want to put your mind at ease, the vast majority of cases that we have at any time are Nuasis County residents. The reason... The, the primary reason it's an issue is we just think that it gives us the opportunity to cite that many more people who are not residents. It's not, I mean, I, I don't have a number, so I don't want to...
So the law says you, I'm not familiar, the law says you can only cite Nuasis County residents?
So the law enforcement agent can only cite a person who was a resident of that county.
Only cite and release.
Right, cite and release, I'm sorry.
Got you.
And only cite and release, or cite and in lieu of arrest, the Sheriff, Sheriff Hooper prefers, a person who is a resident of that county. So the reason that's an issue for us is obviously every year we have, you know, an influx of people at certain times of the year, and the reason law enforcement kind of across the board is so excited about the program is because, you know, instead of spending three or four hours processing something on a, on a, a person on a low-level shoplifting case, they can be across town working on an aggravated assault or a major case, and this gives them the opportunity to have that, that time. So we need, we need the language because it'll clarify that and it'll give us that much more. But I also want to tell the Commissioners, by way of supplementing my public comment, that our county will be the first county in Texas to have a program this robust. Other counties are doing it on single, single offenses. We will be the first county to do it on all seven of the offenses that are, you know, available under the Code of Criminal Procedure. So we really have an opportunity, and we're really excited to kind of set the standard in that regard for the rest of the state. But in terms of that language, it gives us that more, that's much more power, if you will.
Sheriff, can I just ask, do you have any objection to adding this language? Just...
You're talking about the county residency element?
Yeah.
Correct.
That's, that, just, just...
I would...
And you're right, we need to change this, I do like the cite, what, what did you call it?
Cite in lieu of arrest.
There you go, cite in lieu of arrest.
It's going to be a decision made by the individual officer on the street, and the residency issue is problematic, well-intentioned, but problematic, in that I predict the unintended consequence will be, will people will go back to their homes and not be held responsible for the citation.
If they're not Nuasis County residents.
Exactly.
Exactly.
And I think this is why most departments and agencies have a policy that guides their officers in choosing to write a ticket or make a custodial arrest in certain circumstances.
But could that citation become a ticket if they don't show up?
Become a warrant.
Become a warrant, that's what I'm saying, because you have their driver's license, you have everything else, so if they don't show up, then you issue the warrant.
And, and they can speak to that process.
There's got to be a follow-up to that, so...
So do you, do you oppose?
Yeah, I, I would oppose it, and, and I would also think that most leaders of law enforcement agencies in this region would oppose it.
Oppose taking out the residents, or whatever he's wanting to do?
Attempting to alter the existing law that require, well, where this process could only be used for residences, broadening it.
And Sheriff, that makes sense to me, that you don't do that, because if they don't live here, odds are they're not going to show up. But now you can arrest them and take them to jail, right?
At least get them in, into the process in that manner. And we've seen that taken to an extreme in certain, if you've ever driven to Houston and you got pulled over in Kendall County, they do, they escorted you to the courthouse if you were not a resident of Kendall County, and that was the extreme, right? In dealing with offenders that were cited from, and, and not residents of your area. And so I think part of that is the reason that law is written the way it is.
Well, as for me, I respect your opinion, you're the law enforcement officer, and I think that we're going too soft on some crimes, so I am totally for not doing that.
And, and I'll say this, as a jail administrator, I greatly appreciate what is being created by the DA's office, I greatly appreciate it. But as a law enforcement officer and somebody that's been in the business for thirty-five years, I have some heartache with some of it, and I think there, and not to be a naysayer, but I think there will be some unintended consequences that will need to be addressed. But that's not a, a deal killer. You know, we make, we always make adaptations and corrections as we go along.
So you, what you're saying is you'd rather have them, bring them to jail, get them processed in jail, so they stay in jail if they can't get bonded out, so we're...
If they're out of county.
If they're out of county.
Yeah, and, and, but ultimately, the way I understand it, that decision is still going to be left to the law enforcement officer making that contact. He's not going to be mandated to, to write a ticket instead of making a custodial arrest. That's the way I understand it.
And, and I think we're going to get some clarity here, and by the way, court recognizes that District Attorney Mark Gonzalez is in the audience, and I know you signed up for public comment, I just want some clarity. Mark, are you on a different issue?
Well, I'm speaking to every issue, to be honest.
That's fine, but I'm not going to call you up at this time, then, if that's all right?
No, I'm not.
Okay, unless you want to.
No, I'm not.
I figure you didn't join for a reason, so, okay, so then, yeah, absolutely, Matt, will you address that? Because I want clear, I want direction and clarity.
Absolutely. In terms of extreme, I, I think we need to make sure we're not extreme in terms of our concern. I think that law was written a long time ago, I think the realities are now a couple things. First off, when people come for spring break, if they get arrested and taken to jail, we have the exact same concern about them not appearing if they live out of county. You have a high incidence of people who live far out of county who don't show up if they're arrested. Frankly, it's immaterial whether they're given a citation or taken to custodial arrest. Perhaps, you know, I'll concede, maybe actually going in front of the judge and the magistrate will be something that will incentivize them coming back, obviously, for some people that will be the case. But the reality of it is, we have a rate of incidence of people who don't show up anyway. So one, that's a non-issue. Secondly, the issue was actually broached with us last week at a meeting we had with all law enforcement, and the law enforcement officer said, here's the concern, we want to be able to cite people who are not residents of this county, but we know the law is limited to people who are residents of this county. It was actually the Aransas Pass PD that brought it up to us and mentioned that they wanted the opportunity to cite people who were not residents of the county. So Sheriff Hooper may disagree in that regard, but law enforcement, other agencies themselves have stated that they'd like the opportunity to be able to issue citations to people who are not residents for the stated reasons. And I'm glad that Sheriff Hooper did elucidate something for you that I neglected to mention, and that is that none of this is mandatory. The officer absolutely retains his or her discretion on the street, we could not preach that more, because we're not police officers, we don't always see the attendant circumstances, and of course, we don't want them issuing citations where that would be impractical or dangerous to do so. So of course they retain the autonomy. But the reality of it is, this expedites the process, and for the vast majority of people that we're anticipating will be in that contingent, we're, we're not talking major crimes, right? We're talking low-level crimes.
Have you talked to Chief Markle about this? What was his opinion?
We've talked to Assistant Chief Shower, and actually, we haven't talked about this issue, but he's the one we've worked with most closely.
But not Chief Markle yet?
Not Chief Markle, I, I don't want to tell you that we have, but Chief Shower is the one with CCPD, with whom we've retooled the citations, with whom we have worked the entire policy, and with whom we've kind of tooled our program together. So we had a meeting last week with law enforcement from Robstown, Aransas Pass PD, CCISD, everyone in the room was not only on board, they were asking for ways to cite more offenders, because they realize that this maximizes manpower substantially. Instead of spending several hours on a low-level offense, they now have the opportunity and the resources diverted towards major offenses. That's why, by and large, law enforcement really enjoys this program and is looking forward to it, particularly because they retain all the discretion on when they issue a citation as opposed to effect a custodial arrest.
And you know, the Sheriff makes a good point, and I, I like the point that Sheriff makes, but I think if we go back, and I like this site and release, or site, or new arrest, whatever it is, Sheriff, but I think either way you look at it, if you take them to jail and they're released from jail, doesn't mean they're going, you're right, doesn't mean they're going to show up. So what do you do if they don't show up? Issue a warrant.
Exactly.
Same thing with cite and release, is that you're going to process them, you're going to give them a date to return, if they don't return, they're going to get a warrant.
Precisely.
So the warrant, the warrant is the key here on both, on both, on both issues.
Precisely.
And, you know, although you process them in jail, that maybe they got a record with them in jails because they've been processed, and I think some of these young kids, sometimes they make a mistake, they make bad choices, and now they got a record that they were arrested, they're taken to jail, you know, they're released, and I think if they do, if they follow the site and release, I think that won't go on the record if they do what they have to do.
That's correct, I agree completely, and, and on top of that, you know, we talk about being tough on crime, but our office is tough on the crimes.
Well, I want to be tough on the other guys, too, not just our own citizens, but...
But we need to be smart on crime, and this is a matter of efficiency and a matter of maximization of resources. It's easy to say in the abstract, we should take everyone to jail, but the reality of it is, that's not practical. What's practical is...
I think it's a concern we have also about the jail being overcrowded.
Precisely.
This is one of the things that we always say, how can we, how can we really keep the job from being overcrowded?
Yeah, and let me, let me, since this was for the limited purpose of, and we've had good discussion, I think what's very clear is that we need more discussion. And I think what I'd like to do is, aren't, so obviously, you know, we meet every two years as, as the legislature, as the legislature does, and, and I think that by next summer, I know this is crazy, but we will have our legislative agenda done by next summer, so within one-year period from today, we will already be building our, our wish list, if you will, how we can make, you know, better, better laws for our community. And I think maybe in that time period, we can work with Sheriff Hooper, work with other law enforcement, gather data, you know, use data as our friend, and, but I think right now, the best course of action is to, is really, I'd like to get some, some guidance also from Todd Hunter, our representative who happens to be on jurisprudence. I think I've now memorized everybody's committee in the legislature, and so, you know, that's a good place to start, we can ask for his, his thoughts on this, you know, how, how he, we would go about it. But as I said, with under, what, forty-five days left, this would be a hard push anyway. I do not have the data, I don't have the backup information, but make no mistake, if this is in the best interest of our county and we can get the support of law enforcement, I would be delighted to push this agenda in our next session. In the meantime, let's explore it, it's, I'm not closing the door, but I would like to make sure that, that we would have law enforcement on our side, because I can tell you that Todd would require it.
Absolutely, and, and law enforcement brought us the issue, so...
Exactly.
I think for the most part, they are there, but I understand the trepidation and...
Well, wherever there's gaps, as long as we can address them, you know?
And Judge, I think, I agree with what you said, we're trying to do something at the eleventh hour, and there are valid concerns on both sides. And so I think that we, like you said, we need to wait and really look into it.
It'll be here before you know it.
Yes, it will.
Well, that's the, the smallest part of the program, and the rest of the program will be going forward in two weeks, and we're excited about its inception.
Right. Okay, super. With that, I'm going to close, but ask, thank you so much, and ask that our last public comment, yes, thank you, Sheriff, is, is by District Attorney Mark Gonzalez. Welcome, Mark.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks, please, the Court. Well, it's hard to go after everyone has already spoken and said a lot of good things, and that just a testament to my team. I know my name is on the door, but the heart and soul is of the people that speak before you, and everything they've said is definitely true, and I know everyone here is very interested in everything our office does, as they should be. But with that being said, you know, every, all their concerns are, are very true, and this, this court may, you know, we may have an opportunity to come here maybe once every, on Wednesdays, but they're there every single day, day in, day out. And those statistics are real, you know, the 7,513 victim cases that were just in 2017 for two coordinators. So when people come and voice their concerns, those concerns are real. When people come in here and say more needs to be done, it is, and the only way it can be done is for this court to provide more, I guess, positions and bodies, so that way, maybe we can at least get four for 7,513. With that being said, I'm super excited, though. Site in lieu of arrest, or cite, release, or whatever you want to call it, is a, an amazing program that the nation is going to be watching. We will be the first in Texas to try to accomplish this. For those of you that may not study criminal justice reform, this is, this is huge. For many years, there has been a, a system that has been broken, and so what we are trying to accomplish, and as myself, as a district attorney, is, is trying to fix that. But I alone cannot do that, and I want to applaud every agency that has been a part of this from the day, from the inception of this. And that, number one, is obviously the Court for allowing these positions, law enforcement, Sheriff Hooper's been receptive, and all the other law enforcement agencies have, have come on, have called us. I remember my first week in office, CCISD said, hey, how can we do cite and release? Because as you know, in, in County Court Five, most of the time, an individual with these types of crimes, they come before your court, and they get released right to their parents. They don't go into detention, and so the officer's saying, I got to drive him down to see, to give him to his parents and galahar, and while I'm over there, all hell's breaking loose in the cafeteria because I'm a limited officer, and now I have to leave my post." And that was the first week while we were in office. And two years later, we're barely, hopefully in two weeks, April 24th, going to go live with this. And so it's a very exciting time. I'm super excited, and I want you to know that the eyes of Texas are upon us. They will be looking at us and saying, "You know what? Nuasis County was the first one to do it." And not only Nuasis County and Texas will be looking, but the nation. Everyone is looking. If, if you want some, some revolutionary criminal justice reformers, search Larry Krasner in Philadelphia, search Dan Sattenberg in Seattle. Those are just some of the people who are trying to do good for the community, and that's all we really want to do. And when we bring some of these issues, these aren't our own thoughts or ideas, these are citizens' concerns, and the, the whole reason about citing an individual if they live here was brought to our attention by the chief of Morantas Pass. These, this isn't some, Matt didn't even, I don't want to call him out, but he didn't even know that was part of the statute till the, till the chief told us. He's like, "You know you can't do that, right?" And he was like, "I did not know that. Let's look at that." So that's why we brought, brought it up, but that in no way kills our program. But we at the DA's office, we have a lot to be proud about, which is the site in lieu of arrest. We're trying to go to e-file. E-file, PD is super happy about that. There was a time where they have to buy a box load, a truckload of paper to bring because the DA's office would only accept paper copies. This is 2019. My mom has an Instagram and a Facebook. You know, we should be exchanging information efficiently, and under Matt Manning, that's one of his projects that he has been trying to do, which is the e-file, so that way PD doesn't have to walk over here, they don't have to waste their time sitting in our office, they can click a button, we get the file, and we can also click a button and send it out to the defense attorneys, and these things are done quickly. You don't hear those in the news sometimes, I'm not pointing out the caller, Ellie, sorry, but what I'm saying is, but those are the things that are going on in our office that are trying to save the taxpayer money and try to save officers' time and resources. Also, e-discovery, so that way, and I kind of alluded to that, where we're going to give it to the attorney so we don't have to ourselves print the documents, we can just submit it to them electronically, because it takes a long time to scan all those documents and produce all those CDs, and that's why we have backlog, so we're trying to get through that. As well as, we're going to be doing mediations, we're going to utilize our own mediations here upstairs, so that way we could try to resolve some of these criminal cases before they go and clog up the courts, low-level type stuff. The bad guys are still going to prison, I promise you that. Super proud also this legislative session. I too have gone to speak and testify on behalf of two bills. One, which was co-authored, I believe, by Representative Edero, and I believe Senator Nohusso was on it as well in support, I think, well, obviously Representative Hunter was on the committee. It's called Rachel's Law. What we have done is, we, there was a loophole in that legislation where if you are a victim of domestic violence, if Commissioner Mares and me and you are in a domestic partnership, and I assault you here in Corpus, it's a misdemeanor. We go down the road and I assault you in Alice, it's a misdemeanor. The way the law is written is, it should be a felony because it's continuously, but because it's done in different jurisdictions, it's only a misdemeanor. So we took that language out, so that way, I, the district attorney in Nuasis County, can use those two crimes, whether one was in Jimwells, one is here, or in Bear County. Texas is huge. We would travel through the whole state, you know, before we go to San Antonio, you're in four different counties. So what it allows, though, is the district attorney to actually prosecute that misdemeanor, those two separate misdemeanors, as one felony. And so, and it also, I mean, it's just a smart way of doing things. One judge, one lawyer, as opposed to going to two different jurisdictions. And imagine for victims who have to go to two different jurisdictions. She went to San Antonio one week and got assaulted, that was horrible. Now she has to return to San Antonio for the sole purpose of reliving her victimization, when we can take care of that here in Corpus Christi. So that's one thing that I hope to get past this session, and I anticipate it will be done so. As well as our victim's advocate, you heard, Shara, she's an amazing advocate, she's an amazing person with passion. All her concerns are very warranted, and I'm happy that she is part of our team, and so, in closing, I just want to let you guys know that we are super excited about the site and release program. I have a parking space, so I can't really talk about the parking. I don't park in the garage because I have a huge truck, but other than that, the, the one thing that I really want to end this off with is, the collateral, the collateral consequences of this program is going to be so beneficial. When somebody doesn't go to jail that doesn't belong to jail, that parent can take their kid to school, right? I'm sure you're saying, "Well, who cares? That parent shouldn't be doing some of those things." That, that's probably true. I understand that completely. But that parent still gets to take their child to school. That worker, that cook, that, that business owner who depends on that person still gets to show up to work. We don't pay $81 a day to house that person. We don't also pay when someone gets picked up in jail, not that it, it happens a lot because the sheriff definitely makes sure that that place is a safe environment, but if it does happen, we don't get sued because they weren't in jail. Also, when people come in and the, the jail has to take them, they have medical issues, we don't have to pay for their medical issues. So all the collateral, the collateral consequences of this program, even though there are risks, you know, people not showing up, the rewards outweigh all the risk completely, because these are people who do not belong in jail. Until it's your son or your daughter or your family member who comes to spring break and perhaps get caught with a joint or something like that, then you may wish that the language was where, you know, an officer has a discretion to do that. I want to stress this in closing, that these are tools we are giving officers. That's it. Another, another thing on their belt that they can use, if the guy's a knucklehead and he thinks he needs to go to jail, guess what? He goes to jail. Sheriff Hooper has a bed for him or something, a place for him to stay for the night until he bonds out. We are never, ever telling law enforcement what to do. In fact, any of the things that, that we are addressing or saying to the court is mostly done at the suggestion of law enforcement. We listen to them and as well as, as we listen to you all. So if you ever have any questions or concerns, we can meet outside the court or here, table, whatever, our door is open, we'll be happy to bring our entire staff, every commissioner's court, and sign up for public comment every single time, because we're here every day. So, thank you for hearing me, and it's an exciting time in Nuasis County and for the state of Texas, and I am proud to be the name on the, on the door because definitely the leaders have been sitting behind me. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and Tyner, I'm just going to direct that, that our legislative team track for the court Rachel's Law. I'd like to know the status. I know he's out of committee, but we need to be tracking. Okay, we are going to conclude with public comment at this time, and I'm going to move to the consent agenda and ask for a motion. I know that I already, through Tyner, we wish to remove on G...
Three G.
Two. And three G, I'm sorry, and G N, correct?
Three N.
And three N.
Three G two and three N.
Okay, three G two and three N, commissioners?
Table it? You want to table that?
That's correct.
Motion to table.
Well, actually, actually...
Pulling it for discussion or table it? Pull it? Are we pulling it for discussion? Just pull it.
Okay.
Okay, but I have a question, I have a question on N.
Okay, we pull it for discussion.
Okay, pull it for a question. Okay, um, in that case, have you had a chance to review, commissioners, and would I have a motion on A, B, C, D, E, F? Okay, thank you, and the remainders?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, and I'm sorry for the clerk's position, but I believe that's A, well, all those, all A through Q, with the exception of three G two and three N. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Pose same sign. All right, let's move to three G two. What's the issue there?
Catholic Charities wants to change some language on, on the proposed contract.
Okay, so, so, so be that, so we'll just have a motion to...
Move to table, Judge.
Yes, move to table on that, and I'm going to second that since it's mine appropriation. All those in favor signify by saying aye to table three G, I'm sorry, G two.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, the next one is N.
Judge, on this one, we negotiated the contract, and it was agreed by both sides, and as part of the statute, the requirement of the statute is that the, the TCI, the commission has to approve it as a, pursuant to the statute before there's any execution. So, right now, it's still being reviewed, it's not back yet, but you can go forward on this, and the motion would be to approve it, subject to approval by the commission. It is up to 10,000, I mean, I'm sorry, it's up to 10%. It doesn't include the values that we already have received. I'm just kind of touching...
Right, the protections that we discussed are in there.
Right, all the protections are in there.
And what about if we have to hire a law, a law firm, they still get their...
That's, but that's still your decision to make, whether you want to go forward or not.
Right, but if we hire a law firm, they still get their 10%?
It, it would probably, yes, but everything is based upon what is captured, you know, what, what is the amount.
They get their 10% upon the capture above 1.6 million.
And, and it also includes expenses, so it's not 10% plus expenses.
So it's, it would be like, let's, let's say we're at 1.6 and they get us to three, but we feel like it ought to be four, they're only going to get their 10% of what they've got on the table for us, and then if the lawyers have to come in, then we have to negotiate a contract with them for above that.
Whatever the, the final settlement will be.
But they don't get 10% of what the lawyers get, they would get 10% of what they've captured, right? No?
It also includes that, it also includes that, if we haven't received any monies.
Well, no, in other words, like if we've got an offer on the table for $3 million, which is 1.4 above the, the 1.6 that we've already captured, then certainly they ought to get credit for that. But if we, as a court, deem, well, it should be six, then I sure as heck don't think they ought to get 10% of, above the three that they've captured.
They get, they get 10% of the settlement, because the idea here is that a contingency fee contract, and of course, the legislature's trying to take those away from us, so all of this might be for naught. But having said that, they would get 10% of the overall settlement.
Even though they didn't do any of the work on the overall...
Well, actually, they'd be doing all the work in preparation for litigation.
Yes, that's the...
That's, that's, that's the precondition, that they would be doing all the preparation for litigation. But the idea is, is you're either going to pay 40% to a contingency fee contract, or you're going to pay them 30, and these guys get 10. Either way, it's going to be 40, because that's the way they are.
Well, you're, because you're, and you're assuming we can then negotiate a 30 to cut the 10 with another law firm.
I mean, just boot me now from this office if I can't do that. I mean, that's, that's, yes, that's, that's, that's the idea.
Okay, and I can't remember the other concerns we had. I don't have my notes on that, I apologize. But your, your, your representation to the court, Laura, is that all the stuff that we've kind of said need to be in this is in this?
Correct, correct. But we're waiting on TDI, so that's the issue. So can I get a motion to approve, subject to TDI's approval of this contract?
So moved.
And a second, please. And all those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose same sign.
I'm just going to abstain on that one.
No problem.
Don't you ball on that one, sorry.
No worries, no worries. We get to move to regular agenda items now, and I don't, I'm sorry, if I had really, I saw this here, I should have had you do it simultaneously. Dia de los Niños.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners. We are here to celebrate our 11th anniversary on April 27th, on Saturday, April 27th, at the Keach Family Library and at the Bishop Branch Library, and Crystal did a little PowerPoint that she'll explain a few things that we're going to be having.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners. Just to start off with a quote from Neil Gaiman, author and library advocate. Libraries are about freedom, freedom to read, freedom of ideas, freedom of communication. They're about education, continuing on past school and universities, about entertainment, about making safe spaces, and about access to information. So with our first year, for 11th year for Dia de los Niños, which is commonly known as Children Day Book Day, also known as Dia, Diversity in Action, is a celebration every day for children, families, and reading that culminates every yearly on April 30th. And the celebration emphasizes the importance of literacy for children of all linguistic and cultural backgrounds. This year, our common goals for our Dia program is to celebrate children and connect them to the world through learning of books, stories, and libraries. We like to nurture the cognitive and literacy development, introduce families to community resources that provide opportunities for learning through multiple literacies, recognize and respect culture, heritage, and language as powerful tools for strengthening families and communities. So this year, for our Dia at Keach Family Library, which is happening on April 27th, I provided a flyer for you all. It's happening from 11:00 AM to 1:00. We're going to have about 33 vendors, they're going to be interactive, educational. We are having a face painting, petting zoo for the communities, this is for all communities in Nuasis County. Special guest includes Mary Beth Boatman, author Ricky Pittman, author Dr. Dong Wa Kim Robinson, and author Caroline Robinson, which is also the wife of our purchaser, Michael Robinson. So we are promoting local authors within the community, and, and we like to thank you, Commissioner Mares, for your sponsorship in our Dia de los Niños this year. Now for our bishop activities, it will be happening on Tuesday, April 30th. It's going to be happening in the bishop multipurpose room, so thank you Commissioner Jag for having us there at the community room. We are having interactive activities, the bishop, police department, fire department, and constables will be there. Face painting will also be there, CASA, and the Texas A&amp;M Healthy South Texas will be there doing blood pressure and glucose testing there as well. To promote this, we will be going, doing outreach. Today is National Book Mobile Day, but we're going to be doing outreach that week of April 22nd to the 25th. We will be going from Porter Ranses, Olson Elementary, all the way to Petronilla, Awaduce, Kalalan East Elementary, and we'll also be participating in the Robstown Early College Literacy Night on Thursday. And we will be promoting there with our crown costume, Esteban, from the, the book, The Day the Crowns Quit, The Day the Crowns Came Home, and with that, we are also doing a crown collection. So if y'all ever heard of the Crown Initiative, we are a drop-off location at Keach and Bishop. We are accepting used and unused crowns, and in turn, donate the crown to the organization that they do. They melt it down and create new crowns and distribute them to the pediatric hospitals. This is, this is in correlation with our Dia and with the costume that we will be having. So I invite each and every one of you to our Dia events on Saturday, April 27th, and at the Keach Library and at Bishop on Tuesday. Together, we can Dia Diversity in Action, because a public library provides an open and non-judgmental environment, image visuals, and their interests are brought together. We will be downstairs promoting more information about the library. I want to thank Public Works for creating a banner for us and having tables down there. We want more information about the library, we'll be there till about 1:00, 1:30 PM, since I know we're kind of running late. So thank you for having us, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you. Just an excellent presentation and wonderful graphics, and that makes things more interesting and beautiful, so we can tell your age because we know that we're looking for millennials to make everything brighter, so thank you so much for, for doing this. And I'd like to have a box outside by office for crayon, you know, to, to bring crayons.
We have one, so we'll be able to...
Why don't you bring us one, and we'll put it on the third floor and, and share the word and the message out, and it's, it's a wonderful initiative.
Yes, thank you.
And people ask us all the time, "Why do we need county libraries?" You just gave us a five-minute why, and so make sure that we know that county libraries are important and they're needed, and they are an amazing educational and family tool for our rural communities particularly.
And you'll see downstairs the different STEM products that we have because we are technology-affiliated libraries that helps promote STEM programming.
And when do we get our presentation with all the numbers as far as outreach?
In November, we do it in November because we're going to get ready for our summer.
That, that number will blow you away, because I thought, okay, they're, they're in Robstown, right? When I think of the Keach Library. Well, technically, physically, they're in Robstown, but when you bring in those that are being, you know, that are coming in, you have a big amount from Precinct One, you have a big amount even from the island, from Precinct Four, and of course, Precinct Two and Three, there's a lot of, so it's, it's not just one segment of the community, and then y'all tell me stories of people coming from outside other counties to utilize our facilities, so, and it's just a beautiful library. I put this library up against any library I've ever seen, it's just a great, great look, so thank you all for your work.
Thank you, and we'll see you in November.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Moving along, we're going to receive, I'm very excited about this, to hear from the recent, well, to hear about recent activities in the Regional Health Awareness Board.
You got it, okay?
Good, thank you.
Doctor Mobley.
...generation that is technologically challenged.
Welcome, doctor.
Do I punch it? That's exciting. It's even more exciting.
Okay, and this, to the right?
Just punch right, and we go on. Judge, commissioners, I'm Dr. James Mobley, I'm health authority for San Patricio County, been doing that since 1990, and I'm also chair of the Regional Health Awareness Board, and I'm here today to give you an update on probably one of the most odd boards that, that you have anywhere in the area. Things I'll be talking to you about is a bit of the history, the mission of the Regional Health Awareness Board, some of the projects that we've had, and who's on, who's on the board. So this is our official mission statement, "To ensure that opportunities exist for quality dialogue," and that's the important thing, "by citizens of the coastal bend on issues impacting health, safety, environment, and life quality." And when we say quality dialogue, what we're meaning there is getting the facts right. That's the most important thing. When we hear somebody say, "There's a big lump of cancer going on in this area," then we go in and say, okay, let's go to the cancer board and find out exactly what cases we have, how many, what kinds, what are the causes, so that we have good facts for people to make decisions on and to share them with you. Our board representatives, we have three from San Patricio County, three from Nuones County, three from the City of Corpus Christi, also two from local industry, and four from academia. We've had two, added two over the years. Originally, we had a representative from Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi in Kingsville, and then once the Launhel School of Pharmacy got started, we added a pharmacy professor who's been a wonderful asset. And we also found that, and a lot of times, we wanted to be able to reach out to local education, so we also got a representative from the Education Service Center. In addition, we have ex officio non-voting members from the Corpus Christi, Nuones County Health District, San Patricio County Department of Public Health, the Environmental Protection Agency, they actually join us by phone from, from Dallas, and also the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. So our representatives from Nuones County are Shannon Idoyaga, and I think I got that right. She's dean over at, for Scientific Affairs at Delmar. Dr. Albert Guest, a local emergency physician, and of course, Dr. William Bergen, who's health authority for Nuones County. He's my counterpart here. We also, oh, by the way, I have one other member. We had two, but one had to leave, which was Mary Jane Hamilton. Dr. Hamilton is retired now. She was dean of the College of Nursing at Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi. And Umbar Kareshi, it took me five years to learn how to pronounce her name, is, has also been one of our very active board members, so we're happy to have a little support here today. So we were founded by an interlocal agreement in 2003. And again, at, at the time, a lot of people were saying things were happening in the environment, and, and were they good or were they bad, and were they actually happening? And so they, they tried to put together a board that could have some dialogue and, and really work on these issues and try and, and come up with the facts and, and be able to share them. So we wanted to enhance communication in the area. One thing you need to know is, we have no regulatory authority. We can, we can recommend and call attention to things, but we can't do what y'all can do. So we only, we only share information. So it was founded in 2003. Now, I wasn't on the board at the time, but as I understand, things got chaotic enough that they stopped meeting for a year or two. And so in 2006, folks took a look and said, we really need to do this again. And at that time, I was, about the time I was retiring from the Army, and my Judge Simpson said, you don't have anything to do, go ahead and, and join the board. So I joined the board at that time and, and became the chair and have been the chair since then. At the time, we were funded by a grant from industry, and it became clear, if we were going to speak with authority and make sure that, that the facts that we have are correct, we can't be funded by, by industry. So we said, we need to be funded by our, our founding partners, that is Nuones County, San Patricio County, and the City of Corpus Christi, and said, we're just not going to do it until we do it right. And so for about a year, we kind of let it ride, and, and then they came around. So now our funding does come from you, from the City of Corpus Christi, and from, and from San Patricio County. Some of the significant events, and I'll go into these, fluoride, birth defects, hard hats for little heads, air monitoring that we do, and a pretty good controversy on benzene a few years ago, and I'll just highlight some of these briefly. In 2015, the Local Dental Association became aware that there was no fluoride in the water here in Corpus Christi. The story is their machine broke a few years earlier, and they had plans to replace it, but they were planning to build a new facility, so didn't want to put an old machine in a new facility, which wouldn't have been a problem, except they didn't tell anybody. And so all of us thought that all the young children were receiving fluoride in the water, and therefore, we did not prescribe fluoride supplementation. So there was a cohort of about five years at a critical age, when, when teeth are being formed, age one to five, and fluoride is built into the enamel that did not receive the proper enamel. So as soon as we became aware of this, and the Regional Health Awareness Board was, was a moving factor in this, we worked with the mayor and, and the city staff, and were able to get the fluoride back into the water. So we think that's one of our important successes. Birth defects. In 2005, Citizens for Environmental Justice sent a request to the Texas Birth Defects Registry to ask, what was the level of birth defects in our area? Briefly, we were 83%, higher than the rest of Texas. Part of that is because we have a wonderful children's hospital here, and they'll find birth defects that you don't find in other areas. So when we looked and said severe dirt defects, which are ones where the child died, had surgery, or was submitted to the hospital, these are not going to miss, be missed anywhere. We were still 17% higher than the rest of Texas. So we've done a number of things to try and find out about this. I requested the Agency for Toxic Substances Disease Registry, which is a, a branch of the, of the Center for Disease Control, to come in and do an analysis, and they just finished that up, actually, a couple of years ago, around about five years. And they specifically, at that time, looked at air quality to try and determine if there was anything in the air that could be associated with the defects. And basically, what they said is, on very rare instances, there are what they call exceedances, that is, air quality got, the standard of air quality was not met, but in general, it does not look like that there's any association between air quality and the birth defects. So then I worked with the Environmental Protection Agency, and they came in and looked at water quality. And they found specifically that there was no association between the source of water and the likelihood of birth defects. Well, we went back to the Texas Birth Defects Registry and picked out 145 different places in Nuones and San Patricio County that might be a source of contamination. Obviously, the refineries, landfills, airports, and there's a whole list. I'll be happy to share it with you. And so they looked to say, are people living closer to this more likely to have birth defects than people living farther away? No. So there were, so once again, we just have not been able to find a cause. Most recently, last year, we invited the Texas Birth Defects Registry back, because it had been 10 years, and we had a lot more data. Currently, our level of birth defects in Clayburg, San Patricio, and Nuones County are still higher than other counties in the area, but they're dropping. They're not as high as they were. So we're getting better. Unfortunately, we don't know why.
Excuse me, Doctor Mobley, did you all look to cross-tab between alcohol and substance abuse to see if that affected birth defects? Because our, our statistics for those are, are also out of, out of whack with the state level.
Yes, on, on every single birth defect, the Texas Birth Defects Registry, first of all, pulls a hospital record and, and reviews that in minute detail, and then they go out and do a two-hour interview with the mother and find out, where were you when the baby was conceived? Where did you spend that prenatal time? And obviously, going into that, not only the mother, but the father. And they've looked at that, and so far, alcohol's not been a clear one. The ones that we know are diabetes, prenatal care, unfortunately, the obvious ones, teen pregnancy, and, and obesity, and, and so, and they're also ones that we can do something about, so that's the good news. But as far as finding a, a clear environmental cause, we're continuing to look at that, but so far, we've not found any clear smoking gun. Week after next, I'm going to Texas A&amp;M and College Station and giving a full presentation on these birth defects to the School of Public Health, hoping that somebody there will say, I'm really interested in this, and come help us continue to do research on this area.
Yeah, and pardon the interruption once more, but if you would provide us with that as well, one of the things I'm learning is that for grant-writing purposes, if you can get us the data, it helps us find ways to solidify our grants, and that's at all levels, both federal and, and state. And I was just asked recently to provide opioid, you know, data, so that it could help supplement, you know, a possible federal grant. And I can see right away how I can use this data to also help, you know, more so on our local level, but I'd love to, I'd love to be able to use that.
That would be wonderful.
And Maria's left, no, Maria, this is for you. And, and as they say, you just file it until we find the nexus, but you're going to find, you're going to find a way to use it, I'm sure.
I'll get you a thumbnail.
Yeah, this is powerful tools for, for our grants department.
A, a number of papers have been published on this, so there's-
Right.
-a lot of data out there.
Right.
And we will get it all down to excruciating detail, I promise you. So hard hats for little heads. This is a fun thing. We are partnering with the Texas Academy of Family Physicians, of which I am a member, and the Texas Medical Association, of which I am a member, to give out free helmets, bicycle helmets. And what we found is that if a child is riding a bicycle and wears a helmet, there's a 90% reduction in head injury if they fall off that bike. And frankly, my neuro, my pediatric neurosurgeons were tired of having kids in coma in the ICU. And so we have partnered them to give away free helmets. So far, we've given away in this area about 2,000 helmets. We have several more giveaways planned. That's always, when we're at a health fair or something like that, that's, that's the popular item, because it's about a $35 helmet. And, and so, and it's at no charge, either to the taxpayers or, or to the children. So it's a, it's a really good program, of which I'm quite proud. You may have noticed that we've had industrial expansion in the area, and one of the things that, that we're doing at the Regional Health Awareness Board is attempting to monitor that, and especially the way that it stresses our infrastructure. One of the things we're specifically concerned about is air quality. We have really good air quality right now. I'll demonstrate that in just a second. And we want to make sure, if there's any changes in that, that we know it right away. So we sent a request to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, asked that they do an assessment of basically where the growth is programmed and where would be the best place to put monitors. Currently, Shinyer is putting in a monitor in San Patricio County in Gregory. It's going to look at, I think, 27 different ones on an hourly basis, so, so that's a good step. Exxon is planning to put two. We're still kind of negotiating with them on where, and hopefully, TCEQ will also come in and help us. The idea being, again, before there's a problem, we're on top of it, and when it raises like a, you know, a hundredth of 1%, we're on top of that thing, not waiting till, you know, the, the yellow gas is coming out of places and things like that. So that's something we're just on top of. And oh, by the way, we're doing a really good job. Y'all are doing a really good job on ozone, which is one of the main things that the EPA monitors. And you can see the red line is, is where it takes us to be legal, and you can see the ozone, the little, the little dotted lines coming down there. Over the years, you're gradually reducing. We're doing a really, really good job there, and we need to continue, because I expect that they'll continue to push those standards down. But your local industries and our academic partners are all just doing a tremendous job there, and I send them my compliments. And I thank you all too, because you support that. One of the exciting things that, that happened to me, not long after I became chair, is I, I tried to stay in contact with the EPA. So I'm in Dallas and walked into the EPA there and, and said, how are things? And they said, what in the world's going on with benzene down in Corpus Christi? And it turns out that a study had been done at my alma mater, Texas A&amp;M, to look at benzene levels in local residents in the Hillcrest area. And some of those were quite high. When we tried to find out exactly how the study was done, was really hard to figure that out. And what we did was request that the Centers for Disease Control come in and reproduce the study, and they have the world's experts on this. So originally, the study was done by having people go to a local clinic and have benzene levels drawn. Problem is, when you hop in your car, your benzene levels go up. And oh, by the way, the red top tube that we use to draw the blood contains benzene. And so if it's not properly done, and we did not know if it was properly done in the original study, then we get artificial levels. So we got the best people in the world in, to Hillcrest, and they actually did monitoring and the drawing within the people's houses. They monitored the water, they had them wear air monitors within their houses. And what we found is there was not an increased level of benzene. So we think that was a really important thing, because there were a lot of concerns at the EPA and here at the time. And we got the best people in the world to do, frankly, the best study that's ever been done on benzene, and the Regional Health Awareness Board did that, so we're quite proud of that. We do a lot of other things, information releases, just some of them that we've done, again, opioids. Naloxone's very important to have available to reverse opioid overdose, so we've done releases on that. Believe it or not, if you, if you drink five cups of coffee or more per day, you're likely to live longer. So there it is, have at it, folks. Head lice is always a problem. There's some issues with sleep in children and, and how those sleep times change when they become teenagers. Basically, in case you hadn't noticed, they stay up later, but there's actually a physiological reason for that. And when they get to be an adult, about 25, then it goes back to being an adult and wondering why those kids are up all night. We've talked about insect repellents when we had an outbreak of intestinal flu, the best way to do oral rehydration, red yeast rice, which is a substitute for statins for cholesterol. We've held, in the last year, Birth Defect Seminar, we made a presentation to the Hurricane Conference and also out to the environmental engineers at Texas A&amp;M Kingsville. So far this year, we've talked about tactical caffeine, that is, how if you need caffeine to help with your alertness, what's the best way to do that? Occasional cigarette use, and the first study that ever came out on, on injuries from these [inaudible] and to actually have some good data on the risks and all. And we're continuing to work on things. Probiotics, do they work? No. Medical foods for dementia, you're hearing that advertised on the radio all the time, no, they don't work either. Cannabis, a lot of information there, a lot of controversy. Measles, we've got an outbreak, happily not in this area so far, but every one of those cases is very expensive, and the recent studies on aspirin that show it's not for everyone. Talk to your doctor first. Subject to your questions, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I'm particularly fascinated by the breadth of, of your work and the accomplishments that you've made to our community. It's part of the job that people ask me all the time, I mean, did you know it was going to be all this? And the answer is, is whatever I thought, I now magnify times 100. And this is one of those days for me. I certainly was aware of the board, I understood its makeup, understood the structure. You've really opened my eyes to the, to the width, really, and the depth of, of what it is that you're working on. And I would also ask that, from the naloxone, naloxone component, if I could, if you would share that data with this office. Again, we are looking for resources for opioid, the opioid crisis in what I'm calling in Nuones County today, because we are three times the level of any other county in Texas from an urban center perspective. So I would love to see that. And then also would ask that you might, I notice that you haven't tackled behavioral health and intellectual disabilities and, and the, the lack thereof of resources, and I would like to just make you aware, Doctor Mobley, that, that this county is pursuing a quality health improvement plan to work on the social determinants that are leading us down this path. And I would ask for your counsel and guidance, and perhaps even your representation, if you so desire, but would highly encourage you to help me develop our plan in the next, my goal is, by the end of summer. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to, I, I can see now that you're a resource that is unbelievable, and, and I actually need to visit with Doctor Bergen as well. So I think this goes to show that San Patricio and Nuones can be great neighbors and have been great neighbors, and, and there's many more things that bind us than divide us. So thank you for your leadership, and I hope that Maggie, if you don't mind, if you'll get Doctor Mobley's information, Maggie Turner, Chief of Staff, to this office, would like to be able to be in contact with you in the future on behavioral health, as we think that's a regional health crisis as well.
That is actually one of our agenda items. I didn't put it on here, but-
Okay, great.
We, we do that every month. We've had Doctor Pedario in.
Great, that's who I'm working with as well.
Personal thing, had a, an executive the other day in a, in a large company here, basically got depressed, and he was serious. He, he wrote a note, took a pistol, went down to the beach, and we got to him in time. But when it came time to put him in the hospital, I had to send him to the valley. There was not a bed here.
I, I am-
I know you know that.
I know it, I know it, and I say it every meeting, because, I mean, when I actually say what we're going to do, I don't want people to go, ah, you know, that's, that's, we're not going to get there. Yes, we will, and we must. And I'm going to need your regional advisory health board to really stand strong behind this premise, and, but again, by backing it up with data. I don't do anything unless it's scientific, so very excited about your presentation today.
Thank you.
And thank you for, thank Doctor Hamilton as well. I certainly noted that she was in the audience.
She's a busy person.
Yes. Okay. We're going to, I'd like to receive a, a motion to table number three. I think we've had ample limited exposure to it.
So moved.
And a second, I'll second. And all those in favor, or if there's any further, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, aye on that. Sheriff Hooper, what made you wait?
Well, Judge, Commissioner Vaughn asked that we put this on the agenda to receive an update on the sheriff and constable fees.
Okay.
And as you may recall, many of you, the court adjusted fees in August of 2018. We had to report that to the comptroller.
Correct.
And the, these fees went into effect January 1, which were increased over 2018, and I think the auditor's offices run some numbers.
Wonderful. And let's just remind the court and the audience that these were processing fees that were adjusted for best practices. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so Dale, you want to, do you want to go over them, or?
Yes. Oh, we ran a transaction history of the first quarter of each year, from last year to this year, determine. Right now, we're only showing you the increases in revenue that we've seen. As you see for January, we had a $33,000 increase. For February, there was a $41,000 increase, and for March, there was a $13,000 increase. Now, I'm sure most of that increase is due to the fact that we did raise the fees for serving papers. And however, we don't have the total cost on the number of papers served, so there could be a factor too. So now that these are available, we're going to be working with our IT department to be able to run some reports, determine the number of items served, to determine the value between two.
Right.
The next quarter, we should probably tell you, this is the number of papers served between each year, and this is the amount of revenue we've seen increase. And we can justify that this increase was due to the increase in the fees, which I'm sure most of it is.
Right, and I appreciate that clarification. So Commissioners, you just, we're still missing a factor, so it's premature, but it's an excellent sign. And I want to thank Commissioner Gonzalez. I happened to be in the audience that day. I don't remember why that this issue came forward, and this was something you promoted. And an unsung hero is the guy that's not in the audience, and that's Constable Mitchell Clark. It was Constable Clark, who's also an attorney, who recognized that these fees had not been moved in probably over a decade, if not longer, Commissioner. Do you recall, Commissioner? Was it over a decade?
Longer, at least.
Longer than that. So, you know, we talk a lot about fees and whether they're oppressive or not. You know what it is? It's that you have to stay current with the times. There is something called the Cost of Living Index. There is an inflationary issue. And if you're in the business world, you need to make sure that you make adjustments. And the Noesis County is in the business of serving these papers, and we need it to be current, so.
That was the increase for, was the actual serving of the risks and the papers for both the constables and the sheriff's office.
That's correct.
We know who's serving what, Dale?
We can give you a breakdown between each of the constables and share to tell you the increases between each. As we know, most likely, the sheriff does a lot of the serving for us, and most of the increase will be from the sheriff's office. But next quarter, we'll probably give you a better breakdown of the amount per office that does the serving papers. And we'll try to give you a count between last year and this year on how many differences we have in serving of papers.
Right.
And what the revenue increase is.
Yeah, but remember, that time the sheriff, well, receiving most of the papers, but actually they were given to the constables to serve.
Absolutely.
That's why I want to make sure we know, I mean, who's doing the.
Depends on who the serving is. If it comes from the JP, it might go straight to the constable, but we'll work that.
And I'd like to point out, although it shows an increase in revenue of a tremendous 42, 42.57%, this is not necessarily a revenue-making situation. This is the cost of service and the cost of this opportunity to serve these papers. And for example, in Constable Mitchell Clark's situation, here he was, not only with this great idea, but he lacked the proper tools that he needed, which were body cams and body armor. And Commissioner Chesney and I heard his request and made that possible. Well, he has paid for that twice over already, maybe multiple times already with this increase in processing fees.
And Judge, just so you know, when we did this analysis, I think this was before your year, I guess it had to have been, this still doesn't even cover the cost of doing business. We did an analysis that Dale did for us that showed, even with the increases that we did, we're still not covering by any way the cost of doing business. So all we were doing was trying to get a little closer.
Right. And I think over time, when we really look at our financial, you know, modeling and how we get from A to Z, you know, that's something we need to take into account, because we do have to, we do have to get to the cost of doing business. You know, no more, no less, but it definitely needs to be able to be, once you justify to the citizens what it is you're doing and why you're doing it, I think they, it makes for a good case. Well, anyway, it's a good update, and we'll look for that further detail, Dale, from you. Are there any further questions? There's no action item at this time, so I'll move over to number five. And that's discuss and consider an update. And I would also just caution and ask that if there is a legal question regarding this, that you refer to Ms. Jimenez. Laura, do you want to lead, or?
Yeah, I think I'll lead.
Okay, thank you.
As you want it.
No, go ahead.
Okay, you know, and the reason I put this in the agenda, Judge, is I'm always being the one, I guess, pushing this thing so hard. And, you know, and I met with Dale, and my concern has always been the budget, you know? And it's, you know, right now, we talk about $150,000, but I think it's more than that now because of the interest. So if we keep letting it go, you know, we're looking probably $800,000, $900,000. By the time we know it's going to be a million dollars if we don't do, we need to look at it seriously and say, what are we going to actually do with it? I mean, how much time do we need to try to get something done? How much time do, do we need to set a timeline and say, okay, we're going to give us this much time to see if we can do anything with it? You know, this thing happened back in 2013. You know, and back then, 2013, I even voted for it because at that time, you said that the RFP was going to be for concession services. You know, it didn't say bar, or it didn't say restaurant. It says concession services. And so I voted for it because, you know, the pier didn't need a concession stand as far as I was concerned. So it went, I don't know what happened after that, but, you know, just, I guess it's got out of hand. But back in May, we, the board, the coastal boards had approved it in April of 2013. We came back and reaproved it on May 22 of 2013, after three months had already been approved. Again, on the information and the recommendation, the background, it said that the contract is to provide, operate, and maintain the concession stand and furnish services to the accommodations and convenience of the public at Bob Hawke Pier in terms of three years, the three years renewal. So I don't know when we, I guess it renewed in three years, but somewhere it says, one port says three, then another port says five. The contract agreement says five, you know, at least you know five years that we agreed to. And the contract agreement also said that there'd be a base pay of $2,000 with a cap of $12,000. So I think they're paying $12,000 right now, or whenever they can. You know, unfortunately, my question at one time was, what is it that'll make enough money to pay, for us to pay it back? Either we pay it back with interest now to Parks and Wildlife or Fish and Wildlife, and/or we take off the restaurant, the bar, like it really wasn't supposed to be there. We get another agency to pay for the money, but I understand that the agency, we're seeking to pay for the money, it wants us to pay them back anyway. So we got, you know, either way you look at it, we're going to pay one or pay the other. And if we take it away, say, somebody say, well, we might get sued. Well, we got, somewhere, we're going to pay somebody something, I guess. You know, it's not going to just go away, period. But I understand as far as the agreement, that we shouldn't be liable for sue. That's what I read in the agreement. I might be wrong, so. But it also says that we have 60 days. We can always terminate this contract within 60 days. You know, they have the option, we have the option. And that's what I read here. You know, so, and all through the agreement, it just says concession year. It doesn't say anything about restaurants, it doesn't say anything about a bar. All through the agreement, it says concession year. And it says concession year is not authorized to make alterations, modifications, or functional changes to the area assigned, except by the written approval of the Parks Commission. So somebody approved it from the Parks Commission, I guess. I don't know who, but. You know, and I'm trying to read the, and it's good, I never seen the agreement before until about last week, when I started trying to get some information and find out what actually the agreement did say. And then the performance is, the concession year agrees to perform and faithfully observe and comply with all the conditions, regulations, and provisions prescribed herein and further indemnify, save harmless, Noesis County and the Board of Commissioners. So what they're telling us is, I guess they're not going to hold us liable for, but I don't know, this is our property. You know, and if we allow them to be there and something happens, I think we are liable. I mean, maybe something for Laura to do stuff, but I mean, you know, I'm just saying, I'm just reading what's in here, you know? So, you know, and this keeps on going up to. Back in June of 18, 2018, you know, it came before us again, and it was also a part of the consent agenda. It said, accept the executed agreement amendment, again, is a RFP, concession service for Bob Hawke Pier with Michael Mays DBA, Michael Mays Beachside Bar and Grill, is approved by the Park Board on May the 5th. On May the 5th, on April the 5th, the Park Board, to my understanding, approved the concession stand. That's what I understand. So, and I don't know where at one time, but it changed from concession stand to bar and grill. And here also, during that meeting, during that meeting also, during the consent agenda of June the 18th, I made a motion to table it for discussion behind doors and seconded by the judge at that time. And we went behind doors, and we discussed to do certain things, as far as write letters and try to get it off, you know, try to make, you know. And we came back, and it was five, five would approve that the judge would try to submit all kinds of letters to the governor, the coroner, anybody else you can think of, I'm sure, to try to take this thing off. Unfortunately, nothing has worked. I mean, we're still here, and it's still there, and nobody has actually responded to, you know, to given us some kind of leeway. So, and then on the same one, it says, on the agreement amendment, number one concession, and it says the concession service contract of Bob Hawke Pier. And then there's a here, thou fore, on the resolution, it says to exercise the renewal option of five years, and I don't know what happened to three years, of five years. And it also says that the commissioner's base pay is $2,000 with a cap of $12,000. And so we're getting now $12,000. And the concession year acknowledges that the construction of the observation deck was funded by U.S. Fish and Wildlife and agrees to abide by any restrictions opposed by U.S. Fish and Wildlife and approve Commissioners' Court regarding the use of the observation deck. And it says here also, either party may terminate this contract within 60 days, written notice prior to the end of then, prior to the end of then and current term. So I don't know, and we voted on that. So, I mean, to me, I don't know if it says we can terminate it, or they can terminate it. So, we've got to know, we've got something from the county attorney on April the 10th of 18th, saying that we couldn't do this. You know, it was grant money, and grant money was restricted. And, you know, if you read her last paragraph in summary, it just gives me really the opinion that we can't do it. We continue to do it anyway, but it says you can't do it. And then there's also a correspondence that I had never seen. It was submitted, I guess, by Fish and Wildlife. And it said, and I don't know if it was sent to Noesis County or to, it mentioned Scott's name, so I don't know if it mentioned to the county, to Scott or whatever, but it says that the information was presented and discussed over the phone as well as email, to remove overall appearances that this is a public space and manage it as such. Remove all commercial advertisements within the space. Add additional grant acknowledgement signatures in the space. This are the CAPP GLO signs. I know this is not required to have more than one in a highly visible space, but a couple more would help. Develop and install educational signage. Remove the Michael Mays signs and affixate to the original structure. Add an additional banner type sign that reads Bob Hawke Pier Observation Deck. And I don't know if these things were actually done or not, but, I mean. Add additional smaller directional signage on the approach to the pier directing folks to this area. Again, also add a new logo. And then it says, following discussion, Fish and Wildlife responded with additional details to the action items above, they felt would bring resolution to this issues and concerns. Says, hi, Scott, just a few thoughts this evening. Perhaps we could discuss tomorrow morning before I head to a meeting in North Fork. In general, the bullets look good. Very appreciative to the recommendations for extra signage. The new logo should go a long ways. The observation area is a county facility. And it goes a little bit more to explain what they're talking about, I guess, on the observation deck. And on the back, it just says that also remove the overshadowed by use of Michael Mays signature. We discuss the primary purpose of the structure for environmental education and wildlife observation and general enjoyment of the Gulf Coast natural resources. You would like to shed, give me a ring around 10:00 AM. And then the bottom is a sign that says, in general, in general, keeping with the spirit of the grant award, the primary use and purpose was, for the funded project is that it operates a public space for environmental education, wildlife, observation, and general enjoyment of the Gulf Coast natural resources. Parks and Wildlife position as well, that all points of sale should be generated in the original structure and not that of the observation deck. So, you know, then the county attorney again on June the 14th sent another opinion that we couldn't do it, and, you know, let us know that, you know, if we ask for opinions, we keep getting opinions, and, you know, let us know that we're still in violation. And I asked Dale to give me a copy of what has come in from the Michael Mays per year, which is 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. And every year, there's one, two, three, four, five, six months, the night that money was raised, according to this. So if there's not money raised, and we're going to pay it back, how are we going to pay it back? You know, I mean, that concerns me, because I was one of those that voted to raise the taxes, you know, because we didn't have enough money to do certain things, you know, and that took the hit. You know, some people didn't vote for the taxes, you know, but they're taking everything else. So, you know, I'm just saying, this, I don't, to me, I think we need to take this thing pretty serious, even hurting for funds, you know, what are we going to do with it? The total amount for the five years that I see here is $530,000. That money goes back into the, I guess, Dale, into the.
Coastal parks.
Coastal parks.
So, I mean, so why can't we use that money to pay back what we owe? It's $530,000, but we're still going to owe another $300,000. So, I mean, I'm just, we're not getting ahead here, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we're not, we're trying to say we're making all this money, we're making money, but we're not getting ahead, I don't think. But if, but my concern is that if we're making $12,000 a month, or we're getting $12,000 a month, is that enough of a payment to pay off what we owe if we don't make $12,000 in six months? So, you know, I'm just bringing this thing up for the last time I'm going to bring it up. The Commissioners' Court wants to continue with it? That's, you know, that's your dealing, you know, you know where I stand with it, you know, and I'm, you know, I just want to make sure we bring it up. My thing is that we're going to go with it. I think we just send a timeline of, you know, what are we looking at, and when do we stop doing this?
Commissioner, I appreciate particularly, it was a good history, and I'm actually going to get a copy of everything that you have, just so I can cross-check it with my packet that I have. What I'd like to promote, Commissioners, is that we come up with a plan, a plan that we can then put into action. I know we have talked about it. I know that I have personally worked with Commissioner Chesney and Coastal Parks, but what I want to reveal to you is that on, and don't quote me, but I think May 12 is Mother's Day, so that means that Monday is May 13. It is my purpose and plan to go to Washington, D.C. on May 13 and May 14. And my purpose is to not only engage with United States Fish and Wildlife. And my purpose is to not only engage with United States Fish and Wildlife, but with our congressional delegation, who I have already alerted, and they are actually helping facilitate these meetings, so that I can see what options are available, so I can bring back to this court to see what plan of action. I too do not wish to ignore it anymore. And I don't think, I know it's been on the forefront of my mind since day one, and as a result, we've been able to work with the congressional delegation of Congressman Cloud's office, believe it or not, I've reached out to Congressman Bella, Congressman Gonzalez, because when it comes to federal issues, their strength in numbers and they also have had, you know, you always like to look to see if they have any similar situations that have occurred in their jurisdictions and how did they resolve it and what was best for the community. So, in that vein, my hope is in very short order, very few, just a few more weeks, allow me the opportunity to go to Washington DC to have these meetings so that we can address possible solutions. And I would like to be able to bring all solutions back to you and be able to see if we would like to pursue one, one of those plans of action. I think that in addition to that, it has been noted that many letters have been written. That's the first order of business, you write the letter, but when you don't get answered, you need to get up and you need to go over there and you need to have a discussion. There are some things, I think proactively, that the letter points out that we have done and we can maybe even strengthen. And also, there is some new language that was brought to my attention when we really started looking at the granting process. It was not memorialized in our contract, but it does allow for economic development. I'll be using that as a tool to open up a conversation. But make no mistake, we have a dilemma. It is a fiscal one and I'm, I want to just absolutely share with you my desire to resolve it, because I think you're absolutely right. Delaying is not helping us, it's only hurting us, but I believe in my heart that I have a, a, a plan that I'd like to move forward. It begins with putting together a legal and factual packet. And so I've asked our office to work with the county attorney's office, with Coastal Parks, with Precinct Four, and just to give me all the data, right? Give me every single document and let's put it in a notebook that we can then copy so that I can hand it over as well and we can put together a program. I hope that that meets with some of, I hope that meets with your approval, because I think it's the only way to really get resolution, is to go up and sit in front of somebody and Tyner may not know this, but Tyner's going to come with us, with me. At the same time, we're going to address our ADA issues. I don't believe in taking one trip for one cause. We will have the opportunity to cross collateralize and therefore make sure that we make the most of those dollars it'll take to get me to Washington DC. Tyner is the resident expert for ADA, so we will do both at the same time. And again, I'm, I want to be absolutely clear. I understand the problem and I'm looking to present this court with one or more solutions for which we will then study and hopefully make a smart decision that's in the best interest of our county. And with that, I'm going to defer to Lourdes, because if you have any more questions, I think she could possibly answer.
I just got one.
Yes.
Maybe she can touch on that, too. Say, for instance, everything is okay, they take it away, right? Say that everything's okay, they don't charge you, say you don't worry about the money. You can, you know, we're not going to charge you the money. We don't want the money back. All right? I think my concern there, too, say for instance, you go to DC and they said, "Don't worry about it," you know, you don't have to pay the money back, right? We're going to take it off. So, my concern is, how is it going to affect us in the long run when we apply for grants? Because they're not, they're not the ones that are going to give you the grants. Those are the people that just oversee things, you know, and we can't go to them every single time. And then the other thing is, are we going to run a restaurant and a bar in county property? Even though we're clear? I mean, that means that we can run a bar and a restaurant over there in Bishop at the multipurpose center?
Right.
I'm just saying, you know, this is not an over thing. I mean, this is not something you really need to, really need to look at, you know. You know, I was always told by the other judge, talk about water for the Colonias, that we're not in the water business. So, I mean, I could probably say we're not in the restaurant business, we're not in the bar business. So, I mean, I just think there's other things we really need to think about, so, you know, this is just my, my thoughts.
No, and I appreciate that and Lourdes and I will discuss that, I think, you know, thoroughly before we go to Washington. I also want you to know that I don't do anything in a box, commissioners. I'll be, I have already, through our legislative delegation, a local, you know, our Texas delegation for consultants, I've asked them to alert the state federal affairs office and I'm going to ask the GLO for guidance as well. And again, I hope to present an overall solution to this. And Scott Cross is here, probably on an agenda item, but also he knows, and he and I have had great discussions, and one thing that we have not been able to do, but I know is scheduled in the immediate future, is for me personally, after this trip, is to go and visit with the board, not just Scott, but the board, so that I can impress upon them how important it is to, to work together in the future, particularly as it pertains to contracts. You know, for project management, we typically get some guidance and we, you know, we use public works, you know, for those projects that are construction based. And in the future, we need to work with county attorney's office and, and, you know, all the other resources the county has to help guide the better, the best language possible. But we are a landlord, that's definitely the business that, that we're in. And so, whether or not we decide which, what type of business we're going to lease to might be another matter, but there's no doubt that it, for this particular grant, I do believe the observation deck is being acknowledged. It's also being utilized in the manner for which it was prescribed. I myself have inspected the plaque and I know that it's there. I can certify to the folks in DC that I've seen the plaque and I'll be taking pictures. I can certify that any public, any, any person in the public is allowed to go to the observation deck without charge, without any obstruction and any impediment. And I also can certify that there's some documentation on some of the things that you would want as a grant, as a granting agency to say that there's an acknowledgement that, that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife gave the funds to provide for the, for the space. So, there are, there are lots of issues that need to be resolved and I don't mind telling anybody, I didn't, you know, to me, it's the little red hen, you know, I certainly didn't plant the seed and, you know, I didn't water it, but I didn't even get to bake the bread or even eat it. And none of that was on my watch. But I am the judge now and I am taking responsibility and I want to see resolution. And so I'm going to do everything in my power to bring this court solid, and I hope to bring you more than one option, to make a good decision. But I'm also mindful of, of the 65 employees that are there that rely on that, that lease for jobs and, and the good service that it provides our tourists, that's a part of our economy. So, I want to be able to be equitable and to balance both and follow the law, follow the grant, and we're going to work towards a good resolution. And as I said, it's just around the corner, it's May the 13th. And as I get more information, commissioners, as to my, as to my itinerary, I plan to share it through Tyner with all of you. If anybody has any thoughts, if you'd like to be a part of it, either one side or the other, I recommend that, you know, you work with Tyner to get me that information. But I'll also provide you a packet with everything I plan to take them, so that you know that in the rule of completeness, I've not left anything out. I hope that you find that a fair resolution.
I'd like to make a comment. First off, I'd like a copy of the language in the grant and a copy of the contract he's got, I've not seen that. And I don't take lightly what you said, Commissioner. I agree, there are some legitimate concerns. And the first, we have to protect the county. And so, I think we need to take what he said. You know, I agree with you on a lot of those things. A lot of the things that you said, I did not know were in the contract. But I also think that we need to give the judge the opportunity to go and then bring it back to the court and see what she can do.
And I appreciate you, Judge, talking about getting that packet together, because I think we could all benefit from it. I mean, this is a timeline that started really when it was approved in 2013. The only one that was on this court at that time was Commissioner Gonzalez and I think he had just started at the time. So, that will be a good learning experience for us. And we've gotten updates during our executive session and this has been a sensitive issue that we've, a lot of times had to rely on, just attorney-client privilege and update so we would know. But, you know, we don't want to operate in the dark, we want the public to have full disclosure of what's going on, as much as we know and as much as we can say without getting ourselves in trouble legally. But also, you know, I think a lot of times that, and this is not just this issue, but, you know, we come back from an executive session and we say, "Okay, no action was taken." And we leave it at that. And I think that, that kind of stems to a bigger problem, which is, we know what happened, but if there's a way to be able to inform or update the public so that they, you know, at least say, "Hey, we got an attorney's update, the process is still moving forward," or something that we legally can give without kind of giving our hand away if there's legal ramifications. But I think that that may be also some of the biggest concern, because, you know, it's nothing that gets the public more worked up than not knowing or believing that there's something going on, you know, wrong, and not knowing about it. And then you let, we collectively elected officials and others allow that agenda be dictated by those in the community that have little or no information about it, or some other agenda that just wants to discredit or hurt that particular project or, or that board or that body. So, I think we need to also just in general, for this issue and others, be as deliberate as we can and information we can about, about these steps. And I appreciate the judge moving forward next month on this and it's been a long time coming. We had Judge Neal had promised and indicated he was working on it and then he had some health issues and then we just really got caught up in a campaign and now it's on your watch, like you said. And so, I'm glad that we are taking care of it, but I just want the public out there to know who's listening, is that, you know, these have been questions that have been asked, these are hard questions, legitimate questions on the impact to our budget, impact overall, do we have to pay this back or how can, can this be worked out? The fact of the matter is, is there is a vibrant business that's going on there. Also, the other fact is, is that we were given a grant now. So, do those two conflict? Can they work out? I know that that's what the judge is going to work on. So, it's a very complex issue, but like I said, I think we need to make sure that we are dictating as much of that message as possible, so that there's not misinformation or, you know, trying, people trying to connect their own dots without as much of an information as we can. But I think that once you go, you'll have a better idea of what, what steps we have, what options we have. And then I hope to have a decision made by the end of summer, really before the budget is voted on, because we're going to have to know, how do we go one way or the other on this?
Exactly.
So, that's my concern.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's a very important part of, of, of the process. And also, I mean, in communicating, you know, with the public, you bring up a good point. We'll just make sure now, Tyner, I'm disclosing that, look at the calendar, whenever that, after that meeting, whenever the next commissioner's court meeting, that, you know, you marry an agenda item there, so receive update, you know, regarding Washington DC, you know, make sure that that's on the agenda. And also for the press and that's here, I mean, I always welcome tracking what we're doing. So, maybe we can find a way to get the right information out. I remember last court, I was dismayed, because if you were a member of the, of the viewing audience, you might have gotten one impression, because they were just, it was just an excerpt of what was said, and it was misleading. And so I think it's really important that, that we share accurate information. I want to be very clear, I have ideas, I have, I plan in my mind of how I want to formulate it, and it's based on the facts, on the data, you know, on the, on the documents that we have already received and already sent. But make no mistake, all I, all I really want is the authority, you know, to be able to go and explore opportunities. That's what last week's agenda, or two weeks' agenda's item was, and, and I think there was some misinterpretation that we already had a deal. Absolutely not. The most important thing you can learn about county government, for whoever's watching, listening or writing, is that the county judge does not bind the commissioner's court, not without authority, not without a complete vote. So, when I ask for the authority, excuse me, when I ask for authority or ask, you know, when we share this information, it's, it's my way of saying, I want us all to understand that I'm going to go talk about something and I'm going to bring you back the detailed information. And then together, we're going to be able to make a decision that's in the best interest of our county. And that's how I like to do business and I hope we can reemphasize that with this limited discussion today. I look forward to bringing you what I hope to be a positive resolution in the future. Again, there's no action item on this, so we'll move on if there's nothing else, commissioners, to number six, another interesting concept called unclaimed capital credits. And who will take the lead, Tyner?
I'll tell you, Judge, this is the time of year we have to tell the comptroller whether or not we're going to claim unclaimed capital credits. My understanding, this is generally, people primarily maybe in Nuaces Electric Co-op that don't claim their credits, that gets paid to the comptroller as unclaimed capital credits and the county in which those credits occur are authorized to claim those credits. We get paid permissible uses of those funds are economic development.
Move acceptance.
Okay. Well, what I plan to do, Court, is I, I, I need to see how much we get. The judge would like to pay a staffer for the industrial commission out of this fund, but advocacy, children's advocacy is also a permissible expenditure out of this fund. That's the next item. So, if you all want to move for approval, I plan to come back to the court to see how much we get.
Let's just, let's, I've got a motion to move approval and you're going to bring us back more details.
And discussion, Judge?
Yes, let's do a second first.
Okay, second.
Okay, got it, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so, this is a, this is a great program and it's something I had asked Tyner about when I was looking at the, at the business development grant that I'm working on. And right now, we're working through the legislative process to help us and Lourdes and Belinda have helped us with that and craft some language and it went through the legislative process. And they have come back, given language to Representative Haredo's office and so they're pushing a bill forward. And so, that, reason why I bring up that is because the program I'm trying to copy is one that was developed in Hidalgo County and it was used specifically off of these unclaimed capital credits. And like Tyner mentioned, I mean, the first bullet that you have on there is for state or local economic development. And so, this initial pilot program that I'll bring after the session has been completed and hopefully this bill passes, would be, I would be willing to fund this pilot, but I think it's a much bigger program that can be utilized and they use it effectively in Hidalgo County where it's not money that's coming necessarily out of the general fund. Now, if it goes to the position that you're talking about, I have no problem discussing that later on. But this was something that I've had an interest in with the Texas Government Code 381.004, which is local economic development. So, just wanted just to make you all aware of that, so as we move forward with discussion. And I know we've looked with Dale, actually, and I, earlier in the year, like around February or so, we talked about the funding and it's not a big, big pot of money necessarily. Hidalgo County has quite a bit, because their population's probably at least twice the size of Nuaces County. But with that, you know, we're going to be limited in how much we can cover, but just wanted to make you all aware that that discussion, I'm going to bring that up, because that's important to me. If this program doesn't work, that, that is fine, but just, once again, something I think that can help support local economic development directly by helping businesses. And so I'll be bringing that up in June or so, but I just wanted to make you all aware that this is something I've been kind of following for a while and I'm glad that this has come up. And if we can utilize in a new position that staffed and really helps support us through the industrial district, then that, that'll be fine. But I do want to make that part of the overall consideration in the future, so.
So, let me make sure I'm getting this right. Yeah, so this is, we're not talking about anything related to the position today, this is just this program and this resolution.
Just to get the money.
Right, you're just disclosing what's coming somewhere down the road for another day, but for this resolution, we're just opting in on this program.
That's correct.
Okay.
I think I've got a motion and a second.
Yeah.
And discussion and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And then explain the second one, which is related.
Just for your information to the court, the family protection fee is a $15 fee. Just for your information to the court, the family protection fee is a $15 fee filed in a divorce case. The fact of the matter is, we receive about $15,000 per year from that divorce filing fee. There is some padding in the account. In the past, we've used some of this capital credit money to fund the agencies. I want to bring that back to court and see, see how much we're going to get because the comptroller's not told us how mu- how much we're going to get. But I'll bring that back to the court and see how much we have for the various issues that the court may want to spend the money on. What I'm recommending though, right now, is we give these six entities $5,000 each because the money is there to give them. We gave them $10,000 last year. We gave them eight, $8,000 one year in April. I'm suggesting we give them $5,000 right now and I bring everything back when we know how much we're going to get.
You mean, you said $5,000 times six would be $30,000.
$30,000 is what I'm recommending.
And we have that in the, in the fund.
Yes, there's money for that in the fund.
And let me just say this, and there's no greater lever than 501(c)(3)'s and particularly for the ones that are here for my heart. But what I'd really like and what I'm really understanding now, sitting in this chair, is how important it is to, A, leverage dollars when you're a 501(c)(3). So we ought to be able to, you know, discuss with these groups, hey, is there a matching grant that if we give you this, you get that? That's number one. That's, that's absolutely smart business. The second thing is, is that what are we putting our dollars towards? If it's a, you know, we might be able to, to do what I call a restrictive gift so that those dollars are not being used for administrative costs, but they are absolutely being used for a program that this county believes is important. And then third, I think the other component that really ought to be considered is how collaborative are we being in the sense of would the $30,000 be best used for a victim's coordinator who focuses on child crimes, you know, or, or child abuse? I mean, we're not doing enough to collaborate and as a result, I mean, we're throwing dollar, we have, we have amazing dollars and we're not making impact. I want these dollars that you found and I want to thank you for it to make impact. And I, and I'd like to have some comment about that.
I was saying the same thing because if you draw a line at $5,000 and no, no, mark, earmarking no administrative costs, programs only, which is some things that I do with the outside agents that I give money to, this is not for administrative costs, this is for your program and, you know, show me what program you're going to sponsor. But I think the key here, and I mean, I'm hearing you, Judge, saying maybe when comes budget time, you know, we could add another victims, a person with some of the monies from here.
I mean, that's where I'm headed.
Serve all these agencies, you know?
The statute, excuse me, the statute is very specific as to what it can be used, you know, what, what agencies you can fund.
You can't fund a person.
I don't know, we can look at that to see if in fact it's possible or not.
You know, there's contracts on here for permissive purposes of for use of the funding. They're not extremely detailed, but that could be reviewed going forward.
Right, and that's just an idea. The idea is, is we need to be smarter about the dollars that are so precious to us that we're, that we're allocating and that's all it is. And we can have a further discussion later offline, but I think the idea is, is we all agree that you need to bring us back the dollars and that, that we want to leverage them. I mean, if 30 can turn into 60, I promise you, I mean, we, that's what we ought to be looking for. And there's plenty of matching grants and if there's not one, let's go find one. Let's go find one, Maria, because to, to be honest with you, I mean, we're not doing our job unless we're leveraging these dollars.
Maybe the DA can match it too.
That's right. So how do you want to proceed on this? It says discuss and consider allocation. May I suggest that we make the motion subject to a little research on our part? I mean, I think we all agree, we want to allocate the dollars to this, this type of group, is that okay?
You actually have contracts on here for approval.
I don't know if we can, yeah, I don't know, I don't know if this time around, if we're going to delay it too much because we're at the 11th hour, but I mean, I'm, I'm happy, I'm fine to just go forward as is and then do it next time.
That's fine.
With what you're talking about, but if you want to.
Listen, I can still try to advocate through my voice to try to get them to match.
$5,000 each entity. Like I said, last year, we did $10,000.
Remember that, yeah.
The year before, we may have done $8,000.
Right.
I'm suggesting now, they may be expecting it in April because it's Child Abuse Prevention Month is typically when we do the allocation.
And it's, and it's a down allocation too. I mean, it's down, it's less than what they're getting.
It's less what they've been given in the past, but I'm doing that to make sure that we have, you know, money to do some of the other things.
Tyner, the CPS, Community Partners, that's the Rainbow Room, right? That's the one I had submitted maybe like four years ago, the Rainbow Room.
That's correct.
And I guess, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm still not 100% clear on what the other things are, but that's not on the agenda either. But I do think we need to put that back on the agenda pretty quick to decide because if that money, because I think that, that has always been, doesn't mean have to do it, but has always been to these agencies, we, we give that fee. If we're going to change that, then we need to have a public discussion and as Judge likes to say, be very transparent. Because it's, it's going to potentially.
Agreed.
Upset some people possibly, depending on what we're doing, or may not upset people, I don't know. So I'm, I'm happy moving forward with this, but I'd like to get the other one back on the agenda pretty quick.
And, and again, I'd like to go ahead and take the motion, but I'm going to add the language that, and if possible, you know, I would like to have our office contact them and see if we can find matching grants, you know, if available, just if, 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 if. But if you don't give anybody the, the, I mean, everyone takes the path of least resistance here.
So, so moved, Judge, I think that's, that's fine.
All right, super. Second, I've got a motion, a second. All, any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, we've got a City of Port Aransas lifeguard services.
Yes, ma'am.
Aye, Scott, sorry to make you wait so long.
Um, this is a budgeted expense in my Department 180 to get lifeguard services. So it, it's already in there and we're going to get them to provide lifeguarding up in Port A, recommend approval.
All right, give it, all right, good, move in second and all those in favor, yes, sir?
In the future, if you don't want to stay the whole time, I could have done this one for you, but.
Oh, okay.
You just need to have.
No, no, I, I will, I will.
I didn't.
But I set a record.
Yep.
That's great, okay, thank you.
I guess, did we vote on that?
No, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Yeah, if it's a budgeted expense, maybe we'll move that to consent next time.
Or just let me know and I'll do it for you. I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, neither, that's fine.
Yeah, consent. And the, the next one is the, it's an execution of an amendment with GLO regarding beach cleaning and maintenance. And that's just another one, Scott, that I don't think there's anything there. I looked at that.
All, all they're doing is telling you that the state budgeted 729,000 and some odd dollars this year, it's a 729 even, that they have to split between all the participating agencies.
That's the way I understand it.
Yeah, it's, it's nothing.
Put these on consent from now on too.
Yes, sir.
That's the easier way.
Yeah.
But I appreciate it and since I'm still learning.
So moved.
All right, and move, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. And then the next one is HHS for home-delivered meals. Edward, I see this every week in my approval, thank you.
Not a problem, Judge, and thank you Commissioners for your time. This is the Health and Human Services, Texas Department of Health and Human Services. This is a security and privacy inquiry agreement. And essentially, it's an amendment to our existing contract for our meals delivery. Essentially, what they're doing is looking at data usage throughout our systems or throughout actually the state of Texas. So.
Second. You recommend approval. Okay, motion in a second, any further discussion? This is a wonderful program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
In both these things, I'd like to thank Laura and her staff of lawyers. I know that they're really being hammered.
Thank you, Laura. Yes.
Thank you.
You're great, thank you.
Thank you, always.
Belinda. And you're going to take the next one as well on the agreement between Little Miss Kickball and, and obviously we have an updated licensing agreement.
Correct, Judge. Essentially, what happened is we want to give them a little bit more time. We are trying to allow them more of the year in order to change their policies and procedures in order to make what changes they need to take on the additional burden. So what we'd like to do is rescind the original agreement. This next agreement is only for the period of April the 10th through September 30th, which is our fiscal year. Then we'll bring back another agreement at that point where it changes back to them paying for their utilities and everything.
And that's acceptable to Northwest? Yes. Okay, I've got a motion, just need a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye to update that agreement. Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, thank you, Edward.
Thank you, Edward.
Okay, the last one is discuss and con- discuss and consider Craig Enoch and Enoch Kever, PLLCC, to provide legal services to provide proposed boundary dispute and legislation and authorize, Laura, would you be the authorizing?
Sure.
Okay. Authorizing agent to execute the letter.
We don't have the engagement letter, but basically we're asking the court to approve the hiring of Craig Enoch and his firm. And he's a retired justice and we need his help on, on the bill that we have filed regarding the boundary suit, so.
And we have funds available in the, in the legal department for this.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you.
And we'll bring back.
The ratified agreement. Just for the record, he's Justice, former Justice, Supreme Court of Texas. Motion second, any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. And now, Maria, again, help me next time to make your time valuable and when you're up here on something else, you might just remind me. I may say that's not in the best interest of the moment, but usually I'd, I'd put it up.
For me to be in the audience so as I know you.
Well, that's true too. Okay.
So, all right, tell us about this one. This is a renewal, renewal of an agreement that we've had for the past 10-plus years with justice benefits. They assist us in applying for federal funds for the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program. It requires a lot of jail data expertise that our department just does not have. So in exchange for their services, they do retain 15% of whatever grant award we do get. The sheriff has looked over the agreement and is in agreement and recommends approval.
And, and this is best practices on the words, other urban counties do this, or?
Yes, they have contracts all over the state.
Okay.
And I believe they're, they're actually an international company, so they have contracts all over the country.
What an interesting niche they have.
Yes.
Wow, I've never heard of this. Okay, well, I mean, obviously you recommend approval and you need this information.
Yes, because the, the data that they compile is, you know, inmate days and just, you know, all the, it's more, you know, information-driven and, you know, how many bed counts and things like that, that, you know, we just don't have the capacity currently to do.
Right, and I wish that they were, I know they're listening, Daryl and Tyler, wherever you are. I know that our IT also has a tremendous amount of data and I would like in the future, not now, but in the future, to see whether or not, what capability we have. I mean, we talk about investing in infrastructure technology, 15%, I need to see what that looks like over time, but you might just make that little note, how much money that is and what we could do.
Yeah, and Sheriff Hooper, which is the reason why we sent this over to him to review and kind of gave him some background because he did question, he was like, why are they keeping 15%? Is this something we can do? So I did send the data that normally, J, we call them JBI, normally JBI sends us the data, we submit the application, but they kind of give us that.
Got it.
All the background to submit. So I did send that over to his office manager and I told her, I said, you know, this is the kind of amount of data, this is why we can't, you know, do it ourselves. I said, we kind of need that expertise. But in that sense, I will reach out to IT, send them the information.
Yeah, I need you to reach out to IT and then let's just remember to put this on the back burner again for, you know, I want us to be a smart county, which means, you know, working smart, not hard and giving away dollars that you are really working, you're putting all those dollars, you know, you're putting all your effort in. I want to see if exactly what it is.
Jail profile or something? Do they go in there and they, they just look at all the records and look, and what the beds, how many beds they've had for the month and?
They, they do account of, I think they, I don't even know if they give information from the auditor's office because they know like how many corrections officers we have, what the budget is for those corrections officers, how many are part-time, full-time, of course, they're all full-time. And then they also send us information on like basically every inmate that is considered a, an alien, an illegal alien. Because we get funding back for housing those inmates.
Okay, so again, I'm looking for just guidance, direction, information so that we can make better decisions for ourselves. I want to be able to be in the future, not so reliant on, on, on others if possible. Okay, we might be able to, let's find out how detailed it is. I, I certainly like to be briefed on IT from that. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm certain I got a motion in a second. I didn't, did I?
Motion.
Okay, sorry. That's backwards, that, as they say, stop, reverse that? Okay, motion in second and, and then all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. Public Works.
The first item, Judge and Commissioners, is for Public Works is recommending approval of the, of the warranty from DOJ Commercial Roofing for the Poston Building. The project was completed in January and this is a warranty that, that they're requesting for us to sign.
Okay, and you've certified that the work has been completed and is in accordance with the contract.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anyone, motion a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
The second one is also a recommendation from Public Works for approval to sign and accept the roof and rehabilitation warranty from DOJ for the Juvenile Justice Building.
And again, you, you've inspected it and certified that it's, it's complete and?
Yes, ma'am.
So moved. Okay, motion second and all those in favor signify saying aye. Was that a double contract in the sense of did they put that RFP for both buildings at once?
It was, it was informal bids, Judge.
Okay.
One was for the Poston and one was for the Juvenile.
I see. It's just interesting that it was the same company.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, and the next one is dune protection, I see.
The next one is for the, Public Works is, is recommending approval for the dune permit for the City of Corpus Christi. And this is for the Newport Pass Road. We're recommending approval of the, of the permit.
So moved.
Second. Motion in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
The next one, item number four, is Public Works is recommending approval of the dune permit for the City of Corpus Christi. And this one's for the Zon Road.
Uh huh.
And we've reviewed the permit and we're recommending approval.
So moved.
Second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have two items, thank you, Juan. I'm trying my hardest to find a way to, to bridge back a question to you.
Find it.
I can't find it. Laura, I hate being constrained. I want to ask him about something that has to do with previous, with, with work. I guess it'll be fine, we'll just wait, do it offline. There's no way to.
Another agenda item?
You know, it's.
You can go back to another agenda item.
I'm trying, let's see. It's really.
Why don't you just ask me and maybe Juan will hear you.
Yeah, you know, it's, I've been, I've, oh, actually, no, it was on public comment. I can, yes, I can direct him on public comment. Okay, on the public comment on the parking, this is not the first concern that has come up to the office and I was able to speak with Edward about the sheriff's deputies being very concerned about our, the way we fenced off that particular parking lot as we're trying to do something good, no good deed goes unpunished. Could you just address that, please, briefly? I just want to make sure that they've heard us, that we know that when we receive something like that, there are unintentional consequences that we want to make sure we address.
Yes, ma'am, I think the main thing, if I can speak, it's about the gate.
The gate, that's correct.
All those were coordinated with the sheriff's department?
Prior to?
Prior to, yes, ma'am.
If you don't, just to get one off the hook, we had meetings with the captain, with the lieutenant, with everybody in the jail, the chiefs, you know?
Yeah.
Not the Indians, but the chiefs, you know, and they all knew what's going on. The sheriff, and I met with the sheriff and I explained to the sheriff that, you know, that the last thing we were going to do is fix that drive-through. You know, that the gate was going to be the last one and then fix the drive-through. And we went out there, Edward and I went out there yesterday and met with Public Works and Public Works was getting ready to do the drive-through, which actually will be very nice and other than what it is now, you know, and I told the sheriff, people shouldn't jump the gun and try to complain about certain things that we're not even finished yet.
I think it was an issue of the mud.
That's what they're fixing.
Initially, Judge, the gate was going to be on LePain and the north, I'm going to call it the west side of the parking lot. There were some concerns about possibly queuing traffic on LePain, so the gate was moved to Buffalo. Is that correct? Yeah, so that's one of the, that's the purpose of moving the gate. All this was coordinated with the sheriff's department. We had a meeting outside in the field with the sheriff's department. So the pedestrian gate was coordinated and the gate.
Okay, and the parking situation, is there something that you're going to try to address that with Lauta or?
I mean, you can have, you can direct to have a workshop, Judge.
Okay.
Your next meeting and they can come with that or?
Okay.
An agenda item, either when.
Well, we can work with an agenda item. Look, the point was is that I didn't really get to address it, there was too much going on. I wanted to address it with you now, that even the best of plans, if you feel like there's a better plan now that you've seen it and it's in function, not working as well as it was on paper, whether it was disclosed or not, just please know that we're receptive as a court to making changes so that it's best for our, I mean, those citations are very expensive and, you know, we need to make sure that, again, it's an unintended consequence, but it's been brought to our attention, so now it's our duty to address it.
Before you came on board too, just having ears, we did have a plan for the parking area, the parking lots and, you know, putting labels on the parking areas for the constables for everybody else, you know, with staff, you know, and then, and we've got the parking here in the back for the administrative staff, you know, for the commissioners, court and the judge. At one point it just was dropped off, we didn't continue that.
So we need to continue?
So we need to probably go back and see where we dropped off, because all this parking lot was supposed to be for staff on this side, not this side, you know, and but?
Okay, so, so let's just, we'll move on, but can we, can you, for a future agenda item, let's please work on that, let's get back on track. I mean, our employees are our treasure here and they need to know that we hear them when they brought a very important issue to the table, so let's get back on track with that plan. Okay, thank you all so much.
If I may, there's actually a parking order by the court.
Oh, great, we can dig that up.
That exists. And a decision was made at some point to remove the signs because it was not being enforced by anybody.
Well, look, let's revisit that.
We can revisit that.
Okay, great. Dale, take us home with two budget, well, one budget change order and then the financials for our month.
Budget change order 11 is for your consideration. There's two pages. The first page is the general fund. There's five departments that need a little bit of assistance. I needed some temporary assistance because we started so late with our external auditors, I needed to bring in some additional assistance. I brought in some temporary employees from the university to help us to make sure we had the information available, so I needed that. Same thing for Department 1500, they had some, an employee on leave and they need to bring some people in, they use a temporary, contract services for that, so they needed some funds for that available, availability. Constable Five needed some balances to handle his training and other costs, that's why that balance is there. Those funds are available. If you go on page two, we'll see some adjustments for eminent parks. And the eminent parks were done because they needed some repairs on some of their equipment. They have the funds available in their building side, but we wanted to move it to the equipment so they have the expenses they need for to repair the equipment they have. Vector control is just some small, a little professional cost for some equipment they needed and some, also some spray equipment. These are the balances we have for your consideration for budget change order number 11.
And again, just to reiterate, all these are within our ability to provide.
That is correct.
Okay, do I have a motion to?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and second. Any further discussion on this, these change orders that are provided to you? All those in favor signify by saying aye to the change order.
Aye.
Okay, and now our financial report for the month.
I'll try to be as quick as I can.
Let's hit the highlights.
We're getting late. On page four, you see where our main operating funds are at the moment, where our fund balance for the general fund is 63 million. That is high, but it's within relative reasoning because we collect our taxes well in the beginning of the year and spent throughout the year. The main one I wanted to look at is on page nine, where we talk our group health insurance. Our group health insurance has been doing very well this year. We've seen, right now, we're about a $200,000 or $300,000 increase in our fund balance from last year and right now we're at 1.4 million, but we need to keep an eye on expenses. You'll see the expenses on page eight, I mean, on page 10, excuse me, on page 10 is your revenue and your expenses. Your expenses, you need to be careful on your medical claims and prescription claims because that's where our balances get concerned and there are a couple of months we've had some expenses exceeding our balances. Right now, for fiscal year, we're well in it. And you'll see on page 12, you'll see the little graph and you'll see that in January we had our expenses well exceeding our revenue.
Let's stop, yeah, let's point that out, that was really big.
On page 12, you'll see the graph on the very top where you see revenue expense. You'll see where on January we had a very large amount of claims and your revenue is pretty fixed where the amount coming in, because that's from our premiums for both employees, employers. But our expenses went well high in January. It's gone down in February, but I just sent the last report to the judge and to our other insurance people for March and we are above our expenses again by around $200,000. So that's where we need to keep our eye on those considerations and concerns.
And just so you know, Dale and I have been meeting about that, we're watching it like a hawk. I mean, there's nothing we can do except for to encourage wellness in our county and I think in the future, Commissioners, I'm going to suggest that we have a much more vigorous wellness plan for our county employees. I don't care if they think they don't like the idea, it's really important to the bottom line, it has a tremendous economic impact, and I think if we can use some of these charts to demonstrate that it affects us all, it's important.
And why we're keeping on doing this is because this is where it gets important when we come up to our budget discussions, do we need to increase our premium, our premiums?
That's right, those are the?
That's something we need to determine on.
Okay.
How is our expenses working? Do we see anything that's alarming? Now, some of them might be a major surgery that no one expected, we understand that, but we need to see if there's a trend that we need to cover.
Okay.
On page 13, you'll see our revenue for the general fund. Now, the good thing is you'll see from the very bottom of that page, you'll see our comparison between this year and last year. Right now, we're $4 million higher than we were last year, which is very promising, which means we're bringing some money in from other places other than taxes to cover some of that, even though our largest increase is in taxes and we kind of expect that. And as you know, last year, we were in the first part of Hurricane Harvey and some of the people were paying the, as quickly as possible and now, that's why you'll see a big, big increase on that. I'm going to go to, on page 17 is where we talk about our airport. I haven't brought this up in a while, I need to go and bring this up, this is our revenue from our airport. This is where we have our hangar leases for each of our hangars. And now you'll see some of them, if you look at the very last column to your right, you'll see percent of budget collected. You'll see several of them at 25, 25, 30, 35%. They should be closer to 50.
Yeah, goodness.
So we need to work with the people at the hangars department, the airport, we need to work with Tyner because they oversee the airport to see if we have some concerns of these hangars to make sure we get these people to get paid. If not, we need to follow our rental contracts and either start charging them late fees or whatever fees, and if they continue not paying, then y'all need to determine whether they want to renew their contracts or find someone else.
Yeah, and we have a waiting list out there, Commissioners, so, and he left five minutes ago, but our newest Noises County appointment to our airport board was sitting in the audience this entire time, René Servantes, he just left, but maybe we'll get this message to him.
Do we know in the contracts if we have late fees?
Yes.
We do.
So we should be charging those.
Right, so we need to, but we need to go make it.
They're not paying, are they?
Some of them aren't.
Yeah, that's bad.
Now, some of this might be, we're trying to work it with our staff, with IT, with Tyner and with the airport director on trying to get where we can start getting some of this pay-through credit cards. Right now, we send them a bill, they send us a check. Sometimes that's not as easy as letting them pay through credit card, but we're still working out the process of trying to get it.
And the only thing is, of course, the processing fee. I don't know if we have any flexibility to go through another system that's got some PCI compliance like Apple Pay or something.
That's what we're trying to find, there's, and we've been told by some, when we, on the fuel services, there's a certain card that pilots use that give them some?
Discount.
Extra benefits, but I don't know if we accept that or not. We need to see what our avenues are to find out whether we want to pay through this, pay through the internet or some type of services that we can do to try to get this more realistic right now.
Well, and that's the purpose of the board.
Right.
So Maggie, I think the best thing is I need to attend that next board meeting and get on their agenda to make them aware of this and challenge them. That's what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to come up with good solutions and opportunities and otherwise, you know.
Well, Dale, there's a lot of zero percent on here, just like the farmland rent. Because they pay late after their crop comes in or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Farmland is not till the very end of the year, so you will see zero percent collected because they don't pay till actually close to the end of June or July, so you'll see that towards the end, so, yes, and some of them, we still need to see, private hangars, we're showing zero percent and some other smaller ones we're seeing a zero percent, but?
And when they pay at the end of the year, they pay with interest?
Right now, we don't, our contracts don't say with interest, no.
Will they?
We do have late fees.
Those are paid at the end of the year, they give the late fees for the other month?
As soon as we send out a bill, if they're late, they get a fee attached. And that's up to the airport manager as well as Tyner and his staff to oversee the airport, whether they want to waive those fees or not. And sometimes they have been.
Well, we?
Either they're not.
We shouldn't be waiving them. They're never going to pay on time.
Sometimes they are to try to get the balance paid.
I'm going to go out there and encourage, you know, a 30, 60, 90 policy, I mean, there ought to be a policy. Okay.
Now, 18 shows you our budget expenses, we're right now, if we look at the year we're in, we're should be, we should be at 58.3% remaining of the year.
Hey Dale, Commissioner Gonzalez said put a boot on the plane. Can we, can we, I like that.
I don't think we can do that.
I'm in. I vote yes.
Lock the hangars.
Tell us where the expenses are, we're at 58 point, we should be at 58.3.
58.3 remaining of the fiscal year, so anything below that is where we're concerned, so if you look at page 28, you'll see Department 1465, which is our warehouse, at 55%. If you look at page 30.
I'm sorry, hold on, that's page 28.
28, at the very bottom is Department 1465. On page 30, towards the middle is your Bishop Building, Department 1520, is at 57.2. On page 35, again, his legal aid is at 47.1 and we pay the rent all at once, so that's why they're below, it's not alarming, but I still need to report that.
Let's do it.
On page 54, our Child Protective Services, Department 4130. Which one would you point, were you pointing out on that one? Page 54, the very top, 4130. And that's all for the general fund that's showing as a negative position that I went through as we are, so. However, overall, if you look on page 58, which told our general fund, we're at 67.4% remaining of funds available for the general fund. So we're well ahead of where we should be, we're 58.3, we're almost 10%.
And what's our protocol? So, I mean, we would even be better if we could get some of these departments to be at our threshold. What are we going to do? How do you address this with them?
Well, what you know what we do is we look at the report and we find out those that have yellow and red numbers in them and try to see why it is they have this yellow and red figures. Whether it could be that they either didn't budget correctly in the very beginning or they've had some emergency situations where they needed some of this equipment and that way we can start, as we do our next budget cycles, we can start factoring this stuff in when we start budget workshops to figure out how we want to best address this.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
So overall, we're doing fairly well in the general fund, as well as the other funds are doing, finding the case. On page 83, you'll see where we do our P car transactions. For the month of February, we had $317,802 worth of transactions in expense and you have the breakdown of each of the balances in their entirety. And if you go to page 150, which is the very last page, you'll see for the five months ending February 28th, we've spent $1.9 million worth of transactions using our purchasing card. And it shows you a breakdown between who we spent to, how much we spent and the transactions over there. I submit the monthly financial report for February for your acceptance and I'll be glad to answer any question you might have.
I learned that we spend $419,544 on fuel, more or less, and in the future, you're going to see an agenda item from me and ways that I think we can address that.
Ten issues.
Well, anyway, I look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we've come to the fun part of the afternoon here and that is executive session at this time and I'm providing public notice that Commissioners Court has elected to go into executive session as authorized by the Open Meetings Act, which is 551 in the Texas Government Code. And under the Open Meetings Act, in accordance with the authority of Vernon Sections 551, 071 through 0745 and 076, 086 and 087, we will be holding executive session to consult with our attorney in the following matters, or could include the following matters, matters related to litigation, real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development negotiations and other matters. Upon completion, we will return into open session and take any action as appropriately deemed necessary and discussed in executive session. And so I'll gavel out now at 12:53. Okay, 1:34 back on the record here and we have some issues to take up. And the first is a decision, a motion regarding Morrissey versus Noises County Civil Service Commission, cause number 2015 DCV 5630. Do I have a motion in regards to allowing our county attorney to offer, negotiate and offer a settlement on this?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
And no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Also, we need a motion, Commissioners, on terminating contract with JKS Engineering Company regarding IB McGee Park. And a second? And hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of terminating the contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, that concludes the business of executive session at this time and now I would ask that we do our adjournment in memory of and Commissioner Chesney.
Thank you, Judge. Excuse me, the first one I have today is Coleman Hudson Burris. He was 23, passed away April 3rd, 2019. He was the son of Travis Burris and Renee Turcot and certainly left this earth far too early, so condolences to that family. Also, many of you probably remember Captain Tim Wilson, former CCPD captain here in Corpus Christi, and he recently passed away and Tim was one of those guys you saw on TV a lot, did a lot of speaking for the CCPD and was very active in the community and condolences to him and his family. And finally, the last one I have today is a gentleman that I grew up with, Michael Thomas Dellinger. He died suddenly of a massive stroke, only 55. In fact, I was taking a pre-tour of the Spahn, New Spahn Hospital, because I was not able to go to the big opening and I literally saw him that day driving in his red truck, stopped and said hello and then a couple of days later he was gone, so condolences to the Dellinger family for their loss of Michael Dellinger.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
I am, Judge.
Commissioner Modest.
Thank you, Judge. Dr. James Dempsey Spear, DDS, passed away this past Sunday after a relatively short battle with health issues. He was the owner of Sunshine Dental Center since 1992 and he's also a deacon at South Crest Baptist Church and was part of the Bill Glass Prison Ministry. And so he's survived by his wife Diana and two daughters and the rest of the family and friends and staff. And Dr. Spear is important to my family, important to Gina, this is one of her employers. And so she's pretty devastated right now to have lost him, but she got to spend a lot of time with him and his family in his final days and so her and the rest of the staff and of course myself, just express our condolences on this loss for us and for the community. He had been there at the shops at La Palmera and the previous life name that they had as well. He's been there for a long time and then he moved just pretty much right around the the corner, down McCardle a little bit, and so he had a great practice, a lot of people that went there for years since he opened up, and so we're just, we're truly sad and heartbroken, but we know that he was blessed by family and friends in his final hours, and so he'll be celebrating his life later this week in a visitation and memorial service.
And finally, I'll just echo Michael Dellinger. I just, he taught all five of my children at WB Ray, he was affectionately known just as Dellinger, and he was the coolest guy, the greatest teacher, he taught government. I, this is weird, Commissioner Chesney, but I saw him too, just days before he died, and he was driving his truck, and he pulled up right next to me, and I did the proverbial,